Great, thank you. Seven o'clock and welcome everybody to Tuesday, April ninth, 2024 Select Board Meeting. Seven o'clock, we have community input at seven oh five appointments and resignations. Seven fifteen, we'll be discussing the fiscal twenty-five budget in town meeting. Nine twenty-five, the town administrators' report. At nine thirty, minutes and warrants, nine thirty-five liaison reports, nine forty-five, community input. And then hopefully by ten, we'll have adjourned. Okay, is there anybody in the room who would like to offer community input? I'm going to remind everybody, you are limited to one minute. And if you have more than you, then what can sit in a minute, you may write those remarks down. And they would be included in the, they would be included in our next packet at this point. And we do ask people to identify themselves when speaking. Anybody in the room? No? Anybody online? No hands up?
John just joined, so.
Seeing none?
You have five minutes.
Well, I know, but we can do other things. Okay. John, are you here to give any input tonight? Okay. All right. Appointments and resignations. Do you want me to move the appointment?
Yes, please.
Okay. I move to appoint Alana Lynch to the position of municipal assistant for the Historical Commission, pending successful salary negotiations and required hiring administration within anticipated start date of April tenth, 2024. That's tomorrow. Okay. Is there a second?
Okay.
Go ahead. So Nathan seconded that for the minutes. Ryan, you want to say a word or two?
Sure, so we had a shared position, I don't need to lean forward anymore, let's just have it. We had a shared position with the CPC, the MFC, and the
HISCOM.
HISCOM, Historical Commission, which we're appointing right now. The difficulty with that was the majority of that person's time was tied up in minutes in other issues. So we're trying to tease that position apart and assign it in a way that makes sense. So there's current discussions to bring before you a proposal to move the transfer station stickers back to a public, a more, a more public approach, which is the police station through the dispatch. And then the MFC, we solved that, as you know, through the budget process by creating a position inside the facilities department. And then this position is the last piece. So we would like to have a part-time employee ten hours a week. And we happen to have a very talented employee here, Alana, who is working twenty-five hours a week with the town clerk. So she, after many discussions, agreed that it would be a good fit. And we also worked with Peggy to make sure that the assistant town clerk position took priority. So HISCOM work will not happen during assistant town clerk hours. It'll happen on Friday evenings, nights, and make sure there's meeting coverage and the like. So we feel pretty comfortable with the arrangement and very thrilled that Alana agreed to do this.
Excellent. Thank you. Any further questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That was unanimous.
What about?
Do you have to get David or?
We'd probably have to do a
Roll call vote?
Sorry, I didn't even, oh, David.
John, David Lavery is asking, is the audio on?
We're muted. Can everyone online hear us?
Mark says yea. Okay. Now, okay. We'll take this vote. Yes, it should be a roll call vote. So David, were you able to hear the discussion for the appointment of Alana Lynch to the position of municipal assistant? I'm not sure he's with us.
Okay, quick summary, in the room, we were talking about appointing Alana Lynch, who's our current assistant town clerk, very, very talented.
Well, I don't think he can still hear us, is the problem.
Well, the rest of the folks can.
To the Historical Commission for ten hours a week in order to fill, fill that position.
Okay. So David, are you with us?
Yeah.
Okay.
I hear you, I'm driving, I couldn't
Okay, so it's a roll call vote, why don't you, do you vote yea or nay?
Yea.
Okay. Nathan?
Aye.
Snell, aye.
Arnold, aye.
Reda, okay, so that is unanimous. Great. If people could not hear us before, I'm going to open it back up for five minutes for community input. Did you all, sorry? Yeah, and I'm going to remind everybody is for, time limit is one minute per person. Is there anybody online who had something to offer?
Not me, maybe at the end.
You're gonna turn the volume up.
John, can, are you?
Oh, I just said no, no, I saw you looking at me, so I just said no, maybe.
Oh, no, okay, great, okay. All right, so moving Yeah, I just want to be sure. Moving along in that case, Galligan, letter of resignation. We've had a letter of resignation from Catherine Galligan, who has served long on the Board of Health. That's to be acknowledged. Thank her for her service.
I would like to thank her for her service.
All right, Catherine has been on the Board of Health for quite some time. And it has been very actively involved in town. She's going to be missed in that role.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay.
Can Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could Ryan, we, there was some lack of clarity, but just maybe Ryan can bring us up to speed. It's for the Board of Health to propose an appointment for the remaining year, but the two boards, our board and their board, need to agree on such, is that accurate?
Well, we make the appointment.
Okay.
So the position, the vacancy should be advertised, so this, this resignation is for May thirty-first to fill a term that expires in 2025, so it doesn't expire until next town election. So by statute, this position is unadvertised and a appointment is made by the remaining members of the board in question, the appointing board, which is the Board of Health and the Select Board. So it'll be a joint meeting with those two bodies with a full nine-person vote.
Right, isn't that kind of what I said?
Yeah, I don't know, but anyway, everybody now knows what the rules are.
Not to, you said that they appoint and then, or they recommend and appoint, it's just an open, who wants to do it?
Okay. All right. We're going to be going right to the budget in town meeting. And we're starting with Police Station renovation update. And it's a joint meeting with, it says, the design
Police Station Building Renovation Committee.
Thank you, Police Station Renovation.
Yes, BRC.
S-BRC, okay. Would you like to open your meeting? Oh, there you are.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, we did, we got it, we got it.
Nobody elucidated.
Yeah, yes, Ryan did.
Andrew, Ryan did. Yeah, he said it's a joint meeting, it's advertised, and then eventually both boards together vote on it in a joint meeting.
There's Dave.
Yeah, so the Select Board would like an update on where the building renovation is, and specifically any additional, I mean, they can speak for themselves, but any additional costs or project updates they should be aware of, they are recommending the article tonight.
We've been working since February and have, and with Justin Humphries from TBA Architects and his team from BLW Engineers. There have been several, there have been at least one meeting with the Board of Health. I believe that Justin's team is on the agenda for Historical Commission, working on planning board and zoning. And there's already been an extension of the order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. So I'm guessing by the May town meeting, we will not have all those approvals in place, but I think that it will, I don't see that as a major roadblock. I think that's just an ongoing conversation and making sure people have the right amount of information. But the critical thing is scope and budget. We, I know in December, there was a cost estimate of 2.919 million, I believe. Since then, meeting with Chief Amendola, there have been, there have been a few minor programmatic changes, particularly with regards to security. And, but, and any of the cost implications really are related to looking at making, at the HVAC system and getting rid of fossil fuels. So right now, gas serves one of the air handler units, I believe, and the hot water, domestic hot water. And that air handler unit was considered, so basically beyond life. And so, so the idea of moving the elect, the gas meter just to have a gas domestic hot water heater is, is probably not financially the right thing to do. And we're trying to keep the, make the renovations as environmentally responsible as possible. So when you saw on the mosquito going all electric, that, that is, that is the goal. It would be more air source heat pumps on the exterior and hot, heat, hot water heat pump, domestic hot water. That is a minor change, but, and we think there are some cost implications of that, but not major, because there was still a lot of work in the building, there was still new HVAC in the building. There was, there's just one air handler that's being replaced, so, but that had to be repaired anyway. So there was some cost. So taking into consideration that, and the electric service, there was, we will provide for two parking, you know, electric, electric charging stations, and that, that has a small cost implication too. So we, we think, after talking to Justin, we will not have a final cost estimate for another two weeks, two and a half weeks or so. However, talking to Justin and his team, we feel that a responsible estimate right now is 3.1 million for, for the work to make the police station accredited, safe with the new community room and, and to, you know, repair and replace aging HVAC and plumbing systems. Little Alan, have I missed anything? Or Dave?
Along with the master plan.
Yeah.
And making it green.
Yes. So it will be a greener building, I mean, we, and I know Dave particularly might be looking into rebates, rebates for both the mechanical system. And the town can then look into, we'll just install some empty conduit from the panel. The town can look into solar, future solar. And I know one question we're going to ask Historical Commission, well, they are, I mean, we, the team, is, will, they've already, we already talked to Colby, is it Colby? No. I forget, someone from Historical Commission, whether they would have any comment on south-facing, if we will take that, so I don't think that's an issue for them.
I thought by state statute, they had no jurisdiction over Subler.
Okay. Well, in any case, it's not something that's part of this, thank you, part of this project, but it's something that the town can consider. But the backbone should be there for it, and we think structurally, the roof is not, and we'll be able to support it.
And the application coming up for the Environmental Sustainability Committee for the new designation of the town as a community, a sustainable community, will be enhanced by this renovation as well, because people will be going all that.
The, and so you would not move the gas meter because you wouldn't need a gas meter, is that?
We'd get rid of it, it would
What is the generator operating on, not gas?
Diesel.
Gee.
Diesel fuel.
Oh, I wonder why they did that in certain respects, but okay.
When they replaced the diesel engine generator was because the cost to provide a larger pipe, if you will, to it from street, because it needed a lot more QP.
Okay.
So that's why we went with diesel.
Okay, great. All right, so we really won't miss that gas in there. Okay. Anybody have questions, other? Yes?
Yeah. So looking at number seven here, which is the, I'm looking at the TBA report.
Ryan, would you mind putting that up on the screen?
I'm on it.
If possible, thank you.
It's saying here that, that we're not doing the light renovation in some of the work, some of the offices. I agree, it's just discreet and everything. Are, are there other things that were in the original proposal other than that that are not going to be happening in this? That aren't going to
It's up on the screen if you want to see it, Suzanne.
So, you're talking about number seven?
Yeah.
Okay. Finishes.
That's, that was just an example, that was just the thing that I noticed is being, that we're being told, this isn't going to be in there, but you were told about it before. I didn't see any others. Are there, is there anything else that, that we thought we were going to get that we're not going to get?
No, no, we have, certainly nothing, nothing major. I mean, we haven't discussed anything that's being removed. We have to reduce the number of lockers, but from twenty-seven to twenty-one, but apart from that, I don't know of any
There was, there was a, part of the original plan was to increase the number of lockers in the women's locker room. Turns out that because the capacity of the septic system, the flow rates are limited, were affected by the number of lockers, turns out we'll reduce the number of lockers so we can meet that without having to change the septic system.
It's either bedrooms or lockers?
Exactly, yeah.
So it, yes, not related to the amount of people you have in the building at any one time, particularly, so.
Okay.
And can't just use hooks instead of lockers?
We did talk about that.
Yeah, you can, or you can double the size of the locker, it is how lockers
And they can share, and people can share them. I mean, it's just such a stupid rule.
It is.
So the other question that I had was, it says that, you know, window's on the second floor, it says that has to go before the historical, the Historic Commission. Did the heat pumps already go to the historic, if we're adding heat pumps?
I don't think so.
They're inside.
They're, they're
Is there no, there's no condenser outside?
Well, there is an exterior condenser, but there was going to be
Right, they're all outside, the store, by room, on the side of the building where the easement is. So it won't be that visible from the road, I believe, but I think it's a good point that we should make sure we mention that to the store commission, so that
Yeah, because if it's visible from the road
Right.
they would have jurisdiction of that. We just wanted to make sure we don't have a conflict in the future.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
I just described seven, so seven is being discussed as an alternate to the bid. So it's not necessarily being taken out, so this is a sensitivity to the three million dollar cap that the Select Board talked about. So 3.1 million is a conservative estimate, because it hasn't been bid yet. So this isn't a final cost estimate, it's something to put on the warrant to say, we think it'll be around 3.1. When it goes out to bid, it could come in at 2.9, 3.2, 3.3, right, it could change. So identifying things that could be alternates are a way of shaving cost, if necessary, in order to meet the Select Board's goals. So it's not taking it out, it's saying, identifying ways to cut in case it's necessary.
I guess it did just up one of the things that we have, you know, clearly there's, there's a parking issue there. I worry about taking two of those parking spots and kind of having charging stations there, whether or not we're going to lose flexibility or compound the problem that we have. Was it to charge police cars?
What would you charge, there'll be staff parking? So, and I think my signage, that, that's a point, that is a good point, that my signage, it might not be dedicated to, I mean, anyone who probably parked there.
Yeah.
Anyone is in a non-department, non-police department person?
Well, one, I think one's supposed to be a staff space, but I, or if they're both staff spaces, I don't remember. But I know one was definitely for someone working
Yeah, they're, they're not, they're not intended to be public spaces. It's not a great use of how you charge, how you charge EVs. So it's for staff and future police vehicles.
Okay. And it's, and it's, are they, do they have a place on the, on the schematic yet? Or is that still to be worked out? I'm just responding to Nathan's comment about not wanting to have permanent structures that make it more challenging to manage the parking.
Yeah.
We, we did get a big set on Friday, and I have not looked at the electoral site, glad to see. But I'll make, I'll talk to Justin about it. We'll make sure that, that parking is not, you know, is worse than
Yeah.
Because there is a big garage, so.
Yeah. I had a question, just again, I'm, I'm going back to what I recall seeing in December, so I, I could be way out of date here. But at that meeting, we discussed the, the proposed new entrance, you know, that was in the, in the plans that we saw then. Now, and I, at that time, we were saying, let's not do that, because we want to keep the cost down. And I, but I couldn't tell, looking at the new plans, whether it was still there or not. What is happening on the entrance?
No, no new, no new entrance. There's, there's still a new door at the lower level, but not the, not that sort of gold, I'm sure.
And so how will, will there then still be an ADA accessible? I got it, the ramp is to be used, okay, all right. And then my other question was just about the third floor. Again, from my quick glance at the plans, it looked like there is no toilet facility on the third floor. And is that, is that
That was discussed.
And that's a
It's too difficult to get, I think, there.
All right.
But it's not open to the public, so I don't think anybody
No, I just was thinking about it for the staff that are working up there.
It's an inconvenience, that's all.
Yeah, okay.
They shouldn't wait too long to go.
Right. And, and we talked, oh, we talked to Chief Amendola. You know, people are not spending eight hours a day up there, it's, you know, coming and going, so.
So the chief was on
I, yeah, I saw that. But I want to wait. So are there any other questions at the table? David? Nothing? Do we want to invite the chief to weigh in? I saw he was on the screen earlier.
Chief, do you have any comments to make?
Excuse me, no, sorry, I couldn't be in person. I just wanted to take a second, actually, to commend the committee and the work they've been doing. They've been putting in a lot of good effort and trying to make this a successful project for the town. So thank you very much for all your volunteer and help on that end. But they've hit pretty much all the target aspects that we were going to talk about tonight, so they don't have much, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
So the pressure for a number tonight is twofold. First, the warrant has to be posted this week. So if you want to include a number on the warrant, you have to make that decision now before the final cost estimate is done, which is why the 3.1 is being recommended with some contingency in there. If you don't want to put a number on the warrant and just keep it general, that's also fine. But the, and they can speak for themselves, but the committee discussed that a number would be better than no number on the warrant, signifying that this is a consensus effort going out to the town. That number can also change as you go into town meeting, so it can go, it can go up and it can also go down if you want in the motion book. So the, the pressure to get a decision done tonight is, is not the final design or the final cost, it's to get the warrant out to the public so that they know this vote is coming and then to adjust it as you go to town meeting on May thirteenth.
Okay.
I'm comfortable moving ahead with the, the number.
I'm a little less inclined, even though I think kind of like the committee thinks it's valuable, so I'd like to hear a little bit more. But I'm just because I'm concerned that if we go out and if, if it comes in at higher than 3.1 million, I think we have to, you know, we may have to really seriously evaluate this. Not that we wouldn't do it, but, and I just think we set ourselves up for a problem. And if it's only two and a half weeks, why wouldn't we get the number and then, you know, be able to go into town meeting with a number?
Well, one thing is, that's an estimated number, it's not a bid number. If we were, I would agree with you if we were going out to bid and we were going to get a bid number. But an estimated number is still an estimate.
And this will then commit the town, if the, at the town meeting, to that number. And we could raise it at town meeting. So if, if for instance, if we put, set the number tonight at 3.1 million or something, and then it came in at 3.2, the town meeting, we could amend it to 3.2 and vote on it at that time.
Yeah, and we might even do it a few days beforehand, right? So it's in the handbook, motions handbook, handout, right? If we, if we knew it by the time we had that May seventh meeting or whatever that date is, week before. Well, do, do you all want to share with us your thoughts about recommending we have a number?
It was, it was more so people get a sense of, this is the scope and, you know, we're not trying to not show you stuff. But it, as, as Kate said, it's, even if one, we have the cost estimate, it's not a fine bid, it's not an actual bid. So it's someone's best professional estimate about what the price might be.
We felt it was a step in the right direction toward transparency. Other than saying, we don't want to tell you what it might cost. It's just a way of saying, it was our best guess at the moment.
Can we, can we put some language to that effect in the explanation in the warrant? To make sure, in the summary?
Don't we have to settle on a not-to-exceed number? Isn't the number voted the not-to-exceed number? Whatever the number is at the end, and whenever we do it, don't we have to vote a number? If it's higher, when you're all done with all the bidding, if it's higher
You have to go back.
You have to go back, so it is a not-to-exceed number. I don't understand all the warrant language, the Weasley language. We should, we may not want to do it now, but we have to
You have
put a number down by the time of town meeting, right?
By the time of town meeting. Which is, why do we need to do it now?
We don't, but we also don't need the Weasley language in the warrant, right? We're going to have a number. We don't need best effort and our best guess, we don't need all that.
Yes, we do.
Why?
Because the motion might be for more or less than the number that's in the warrant. The warrant, maybe We're talking about the printed book.
It goes out, that everybody has access to.
So, so
Do you want to introduce yourself?
I'm sorry. And, oh, the microphones pick up for
Yeah, they're picking up.
Okay. Wayne Davis, town moderator. So in the warrant book, you don't have to put a number if you don't want to. You don't have a number for your budget, right? That's the biggest one in the, in the entire warrant. So you don't have to put a number in, but it's good to let people know if you can. Once you put a number in, then other than a small change, if you went from 2.9 to 2.950, you can do a small change upward and as far down as you want. But once you put a number in, you can't go substantively, substantively above it.
Mean it, mean a day or two or, or the day of town meeting?
That, that is right, so if you put in 2.9, 3.1 would be considered, I mean, it's there's no hard and fast line, it's a judgment call on behalf of the, on part of the moderator. But generally, it's, the, the standard is expected to be de minimis. So, you know, maybe a couple of percent, but you don't want to have anything big. So if there, if there's all, if you need a lot of wiggling, then don't put any number. If you think you've got, or, or either that, or you put a high number in and then come in and your motion is lower. But then, you know, on the motion, you still, at the end of the day, whatever is actually voted, if the bids then subsequently come in and they're higher, then you have to go back or come back to those. Is that clear?
So I think the question for the board would be is to, how much can the town, from your tolerate, price for this renovation? Because that's, that would be the key, if it's going to be, I mean, we can go down any amount, but going up higher. Because it's a, it's a risk if you put in what we're recommending right now. So, and you guys have been talking with the FinCom, I haven't And you guys have been talking with the FinCom, I haven't been here.
I'm involved with that recently, so it's just what can the town forward and how high you can go if you wanna put a number in then, I think. And that's only speaking for me because, you know, the committee hasn't looked at this and discussed it or anything like that, but that's just my thought from what Wayne just did.
So I thought three point one was a conservative number. Is it what you were just saying, that might be a tight number?
This is a very interesting construction uh, area timeframe, so, you know, when we first put this out for bid last time and we got the estimates from from TBA and they're they're, they were like, wow, how much hate you're on that committee? They were up almost forty percent or fifty percent, so, um.
Yes. It's very difficult to estimate refurbishment.
We never, we never put out the bid.
I mean, it's much more easy, much easier to estimate building from the ground up. But you never know what you're going to, without XA revision, there's always something that's gonna happen. And and contractors tend to bid higher on rehabs than they built. They bid on other things because they don't know what they they're gonna run into.
And and this is even more complicated because it's it's a it's a phased construction of an operating police station. So it is possible that people will put in extra to make sure that, because it's gonna be actively running and the system's gonna have to be. But if we, well, when we met on Friday, we talked about, we know that the town has a lot of priorities, that the two point nine to three million dollars was was what worked within the general financial capacity. So we talked about, well, where do we think we are based on the two point nine million dollar estimate from December? And that's how we discussed it and talking to Justin and his team. We came up with the three point one as as our a reasonable.
Guessment.
Guessment.
And that um.
And that's what it is.
And that's the concern I personally have is because if we say three point one, we put that in the warrant and then all of a sudden it comes in at three point two five. And we and the town wants to do this, we can't, we'll have to go back.
None of us is opposed to having a higher number, we were just trying to come up with something that we felt.
That you guys would swallow and the town would swallow.
How does it, um, just back to Nathan's question? How much, how tight is the three point one? I mean, you all have a much better sense of the numbers, obviously, than we do, so.
We don't know until we see the estimate.
No, but I mean, the way you put it together, um, I I don't have, it's not in front of me, but that listing of all the costs, you know, that you saw in the memo earlier. I I remember seeing there's some contingency in there and there was a couple of other things near the end of that that budget.
That was the two point nine number, though, that wasn't the three point one.
Right, so what, so.
I I I can add this because it's it's a guess on our part, but, you know, when we talked with TBA, they were looking at, um, you know, cutting some stuff down so that they can get into this three point one million area, or three point three million, three point one. And they removed and redid some of the HVAC that, you know, lower some of the condensing units outside to combining them instead of having separate ones. So, you know, they're concerned too, so I think, I think they're concerned, I think they're confident around free, but they're not estimators, you know.
Right. And and the bidding, you know, the bidding climate can change, you know, in sixty days.
Exactly.
And it just, you know, we still have an inflationary pressure.
So I just wanna clarify then, something Wayne that you were saying. So let's say, just for the sake of the discussion, that we said the number tonight, we were gonna, we decided we did wanna put a number in the printed warrant book. We put in three point one million. The estimate that um, Justin is gonna get back, if I remember his memo, is like in two and a half weeks or something, right? That estimate comes back and is higher. So that in, the way to think about that estimate is, that's a a better, it's a little bit better than the current estimate. Is that is that the way to think about that? It's it's a more, um, okay. And so let's say we're faced then with an increase, Wayne, um, that we wanna consider uh, and we may decide we wanna have the town vote on it. I think it'd be helpful if you could be a little more specific about how much larger. No, but I mean, it because if it's your call, I mean, that's the other part of it here, this is kind of a non dynamic, right? Where it's, well, Wayne, we really feel strongly that, you know, uh, three point five million is is what we should have and, you know, does that seem reasonable?
The other, the other curve is too, before Wayne answers, is that if it comes in at, say, three point two and we have to go for another cycle, the inflation of construction.
I know, I know.
Is gonna be more than that three point two.
Yeah, exactly.
So, I mean.
That's why I'm asking, how, what's our ability to increase the, if we decided we wanted to? What's our ability, what's the range, um, that would be acceptable?
This is why I get paid the big bucks.
Yeah, yeah. We are on the warrant, fifty bucks.
You're paying a lot more than we are.
Yeah. Thousand bucks.
No, I'm trying to get double what they do, right?
Yeah.
No, it's.
Infinitely, infinitely more.
It's a good, it's a good, it's your turn.
We're getting name, image and likeness. We're gonna get coffee mugs and everything.
Yeah, so, um, I, um, okay, I I will, I will, I will, uh, I'll put a stake in the ground at at five percent.
Okay, so.
That's a fair thing.
That's.
So that, so.
So what's five percent of three point one million?
So that's about hundred and fifty. Yeah.
Which is the three point.
Yeah.
Well, from three one, it goes to three two.
Three two five.
Two two five.
Which is kind of.
Yeah.
Wayne, the intent is that if a voter were to come to town meeting and with the expectation that it was gonna be three point one million and said, well, I'm uncomfortable at that number, I'm not gonna show up. And then town meeting goes and it goes to, you know, five million, they say, jeez, I thought it was something gonna gonna be in that three. Is that the rationale or what?
Right, that is that is exactly the rationale. Uh, unfortunately, like many things in law, the the it it's there, it's impossible to draw a, you know, sort of a bright line. It it's a judgment call, where between a fifty percent increase versus a, you know, a point zero five percent increase. At what point would someone go ballistic and say, if I had known, I, you know, would have shown up?
Right.
Uh, and so, um, uh, but my my sense, I since I've not had to confront this particular issue uh, as as moderator, just because it just hasn't hasn't come up. As I've seen what's happened in other towns, some other towns, some moderators say, you know, like they don't wanna go a penny more. I think that's ridiculous. But I think most probably get uncomfortable beyond about five percent, so that's why I'm. I'm not picking it out of thin air, but that seems to me that that's pretty defensible. You know, if you went, yeah, if if you came in at ten percent, would I say, no, you can't have the vote? No, I I wouldn't. Um, I would, I would say, look, you know, just, you know, be be for more.
But even though any of those.
Some voter wants to challenge it, they may have a case, I, but I, you know, who knows what a judgment's.
And so I'm I'm hearing, I mean, there's kind of three gates, right? So there's a gate at the warrant book publishing where we could say, we don't have an estimate, that sounds kind of weak. Or we could say, like what Alan said, like, or what Bill said, you know, we gave it our best shot, this is what we think. It may be slightly different by the time you come to the table, right? And then the second gate is at the meeting, we'll have a fresh set of quotes, but there's still estimates. We'll pick a number, now we're hearing it can be hundred and five percent of the number you put in the book, if we put a number in the book. But then that's a number, that gets voted, and it gets voted at the ballot box, too. Like the same number is what gets voted, even if we dramatically lose something in the week.
The ballot, the ballot doesn't have a number.
It does not have a number.
So the budget is set at town meeting? The authorization to exceed covers the cost of that borrow, so the control is at town meeting, the ballot is not.
And you don't put it, you don't print it on the ballot, I guess, but people have to do their homework. They know, presumably know what they're voting for at that moment.
It it is tied to the town meeting vote.
Yeah, sure. And then there's a process and then real, real binding votes come in. And if it's too much above that, if it's even a penny over that and we can't cut the penny out, then we gotta go back to the voters, right?
Yeah.
We could find, can't we find, if if it was.
Find some savings.
Or find some money, that actually, if it was, came in twenty thousand dollars more and they said, no, this is it. Could the town, we could probably find twenty thousand dollars.
It's only the.
But but it's of magnitude.
Okay, alright, okay, so.
Right.
Yeah, so I'm fine putting, but so we're back to the optics of putting a number in the warrant.
Right, and you said it looks weak and I'm just not.
Well, I think it looks weak to say, I don't have a number, I guess. I kinda now I'm back, now I'm actually on your side.
Alright.
Put some Weasel words around it.
So, so just just to be, I mean, just to be clear, the the, um, the statute is, um, very minimalistic. Because the statute, that, you know, really goes back a couple hundred years, it hasn't been updated that much. All you really need to have is the subject matter.
Right.
Right? Um, the where it gets a little bit trickier is particularly where you're gonna bond something, you know, bond council wants to see more. So the the more you can get in the warrant, the better. And, uh, you know, sort of, I I think we're all, everyone here is in favor of more transparency. So as much as you can tell the voters in advance, you wanna you wanna do that. Um, but you know, as between a rock and a hard place, all you really need to do is have, the the legal requirement is the subject matter. You could say, you know, we're gonna vote on whether to appropriate money for a police station. And that would be sufficient as a warrant, our our article from a purely legal perspective. Uh, so you do have, you do have some plans, it's just a trade off on, um, uh, how, you know, do you wanna formally do it in the warrant? Um, you know, another thing you could do, if you go, I'll call it the budget route, because you never put a budget number in. You know, you can say, okay, look, you know, the but the warrant language just says, we're gonna vote on the police station. And you just don't have a number in, the summary could say, you know, could include that that estimates are coming in. Um, and, you know, a final number will be presented at, you know, in a motion. Currently, it is expected to be somewhere around three million dollars.
Yeah, you have a range, I bet I do.
You could put that in the summary and people get some, they know order of magnitude.
Yeah.
And so if that's what you really care about, um, you know, that may be a solution.
And the order of magnitude that's in the summary, uh, therefore, does not limit us to the five percent.
Right.
Change, right?
Precisely.
So that number, the actual number we wanna present at town meeting could be any number we choose at that point.
That that's right.
Correct?
Unless we want to have some mechanism to limit ourselves.
No, no, I'm I'm not suggesting we recommend.
We did, we did about three million. We, well, that's what I'm, exactly, that's what I'm saying, that's, I mean.
So I guess if we can put it in the summary, it that completely changes what I was gonna say.
Yeah.
Because if that, if that, if the people who wanna put it in, if that meets the goal, then I think that's fine. Um, because I absolutely don't think it should go in the part that we can't really move, because this has gone on for so long. I really, really don't want it to go over three point one million. Um, but we can't do another, we can't have another do over.
Yeah.
And so if we're tying our hands because we want to put a number in, I think that that's a really big mistake. And you know, because we can't even have the conversation about whether or not we we wanna go higher. But I still really think three point one is 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 the max. The the other thing that I would just say is, if, you know, we pulled out some of the finishings on some of the offices as an alternate, are there other things, and I'm not picking on it, but like charging stations, are there other things that we could put in an alternate path? Just in case this comes in a lot higher than we thought and we could say, okay, we'll do those later and not lose the jewel of this project, which is accreditation for the police.
I think there probably are, whether they're whether they're, the key would be just we don't have any costs at all at the moment, knowing whether it's something that's insignificant that can be changed, with both high color temperature and low temperature lighting system uh, versus, you know, uh, the heat pumps, uh, one will have a small amount of benefit in terms of the cost, the other will have a large amounts, we we have no idea what those are right now. But, you know, will there be some trade offs? Probably, whether they're gonna be an area that's affect the total bottom line is not known at this point.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering if we should put those out before the estimate? So that when the estimate does come back, if it's higher than what we thought, we can still pull them out.
We can pull the trigger much faster, yeah.
We can.
Yeah.
Right, I I.
Justin was going to do a few, but it programmatically, this is a pretty tight program and to meet accreditation and accessibility. So we did talk about whether we could do outer alternatives, and there are just a few. But I mean, looking at drawings and and I don't see a ton of value engineering.
You don't see a ton of what?
Uh, um, alternates that would make make this thing.
Give you a a menu of things you could delete if we needed to.
Yeah, value engineering is sort of the term of art to the game of cost cutting.
It would seem like even if it was like a hundred thousand or a hundred fifty thousand dollars, that could be the game changer that we need.
Well, there is a furniture line item that's seventy five thousand dollars, and I think that.
Could be put in a different budget.
That could be something else. Um, that could be, you could, you could definitely take off fifty and just look around for stuff. So that that was the line item I I was looking to cherry pick. Before you did anything construction wise.
Right, and we would just need to know what those are before town meeting, right?
Yeah.
Before giving them real number.
So kind of, so you need to know them before it goes out to bid. So the number is the estimate, it'll be, it was estimated by a professional estimator in December. It's being reestimated by a professional estimator currently. You'll have numbers tied to a construction document. I know there's tons of caveats, but that's as close as you can get without going out to bid.
Before town meeting.
And then when you go out to bid, you can put a lot of the stuff in the alternate to make sure that you meet.
I'm worried about the estimates coming in. You know, I'm wondering if they should be cut before the estimate or if they should be put aside as another project, like like the finishes. So that in going to town meeting, we're going with a number that we know is gonna be absorbable. That's not a word. But, um, you know, it totally, you know, definitely we should do it at the 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 bid documents as well, but I'm I'm worried about that number for town meeting. Is they come back at three point four?
The estimate is gonna be detailed enough, so we'll be able to listen to it and then peel off some of that stuff.
Okay.
I'm hoping, but we we will hopefully have by the twenty fourth.
Okay, alright.
If the estimate's bananas, then you're back to square one, so.
Yeah. So.
That's a good point.
What I'm hearing, though, for the, the original question is that, um, we would not put a number in the warrant, but we would put a very, at very careful expla- explanation in the summary about what the number might could be. And that, you know, to to give people some heads up as to the scope and size of this project.
And and, um, let's just be a little precise then about what that is in the summary. We're thinking it would say in the range of three million, or we're thinking it would say three to three point one? What are we, what are we thinking that actual language would look like in the summary?
Three point one plus or minus.
Three point one must, yeah, the current, current best guess is.
Current best guess, three point one.
That was a bear.
With, yeah, plus or minus. And and that, you know, to make it clear that it's an estimate.
Yeah, yeah. People comfortable with that?
Yeah, very much so, I think this is, we've had a good discussion.
Before you started.
Well, no, we've had a good discussion about this, I just was concerned that if we got to town meeting and it, you know, exceeded it, we would kind of have a real problem. And so I think this alleviates that. And and, you know, I, transparency is important and, you know, hopefully the mosquito covers this and talks about our discussion and, you know, voters are educated, but we'll see what happens.
Okay.
We need a motion or we, this just can be the sense of the board?
I think we have the sense of the board, unless you want, you think it's clearer in the minutes to have a motion?
We're gonna, we're gonna write it tonight, so we're good.
Okay, we're gonna write it and and, okay, great, excellent.
I also have a question, just to.
Yes.
I have a question into bond council if they answer to make sure that we don't need a number, which I don't think we do.
Yes.
But I just wanted to make sure.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you for all your work, yeah, yeah.
I know this is not easy, I haven't done it as before. Yeah, yeah.
I I would say before. I I would say before you dismiss them legitimately, do you plan on recommending that article? The police renovation, when that comes up tonight, or do you need to have more discussion about it?
No, I'm ready, I'm ready to recommend it.
How about you?
And that, the memory that you put up there from TBA, I thought was very, was very well written and and you know, talked about. You know, the importance of accreditation, you know, accessibility, and I think that just in, if people need more language, I mean, Ryan's talked a lot. It's, they they've been very helpful.
Okay. Thank you.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We, yeah, we need to pose our.
Oh. Uh yes, who wants to make a motion to?
I will, who you, you turn, I'll second that.
Oh, Dave, you wanna vote?
Who is I?
Who's so funny? That was Dave.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you, chief, for coming. Alright, alright. Gotcha.
Alright, so um obviously Wayne's here, so.
Yes.
There's things to do, here's the to do list, I put it on the screen for you. So we have to make, you don't have to, but you could consider recommendations of these articles that would be printed in the warrant. If you don't do or you can make those at town meeting, that's that's completely fine too. The order of the articles, the uh summary language, making sure you're comfortable with that. We're gonna talk about taking article five away when we get to that. Changing some, uh I gotta change the numbers if you make any decisions tonight, there's a consideration of a CPA consent agenda. I'm gonna make the graphics visually appealing and then confirm the election warrant. And then I know the town meeting study committee also has some recommendations that they wanted to be part of this. So that's what we have to do tonight and the next hopefully hour and a half.
Okay.
Wayne is limited time.
Yes.
And so why do you see one time?
What do we need to do for that Wayne, Wayne, uh between one and seven, what do we, for you, what do you need for?
Uh.
Or my, I should say.
Uh I just had two things from the um. Come up here from the study, study committee, um. And I don't, you know, unless you need me for something on any of these, which I'm not sure that you do. And maybe the CPA consent.
Yeah, just gonna say, just cuz you and I chatted about it and.
Yeah, so I mean, it's not even on your list, but the 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 things from the the the. With the study committee, um uh one is a very momentous one, which is. Uh recommendation is that the select board get put back up on the stage, but leave the FinCom off.
Alright, whatever.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it's just, uh we, and 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 practice varies in different towns across the 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 state. And after we we let you guys sit in the in the audience last time, a number of people, um you know. Most people were fine with it, some people commented back to me, gee, you know, the select board, um you know. We we elect them, we ought to see them and it's important for them to be accountable and feel accountable. And you know, I like to see them up there, so everyone knows their faces, um.
You can take better aim at them.
Uh perhaps, yeah, anyway, and and the the the, I think it's fair to say, and obviously David's actually the chair of the the study committee. But I I think the feeling of the the study committee was that, yeah, they thought. It is a good thing for people to know who their select board members are and they they felt FinCom was, you know, somewhat different. People can look up the names if they want to, but they since select board was elected. Um and we have, you know, it's the space is a little bit tighter since we have the electric, electronic voting. So I'd actually prefer not to have both groups back up there, but one group is fine, so. I was fine with it and that's, you know, recommendation of the study committee.
Does anybody on the select board have any objection to sitting back up on the stage? So let's, let's accept that recommendation from the.
Right, and and the the, um the, and there are a couple of other things I'm just gonna go ahead and implement on my own. But but one that that actually, it's actually your decision at the at the end of the day, on the consent agenda. Um the consent agenda is um, you know, it's just a procedural thing. And the, and there's not, there's not hard and fast rules. Um we have, our practice in Carlisle has been absolutely middle of the road, as near as I can tell, around the rest of the Commonwealth. Which is that um you put on things you think are routine, that non controversial. Um and in general have avoided things that are just one time votes or that it's the first time something comes up. Um so there've been a number of things over the years where we voted it separately and then the second or third year they came up, we just put it in the consent agenda. Um in other towns, Concord and Boxborough are are two that, you know, are reasonably close. Uh and that I I would say personally, I I respect their practice and their their moderators and the way they they do things. Uh they've tended to be a little bit more liberal, so things that they, again, it's something that you think is gonna be routine. Cuz it only takes one voter to say hold and then it's pulled out, so it's something.
By the way.
Right, yeah, and that could still happen and and if someone wants to throw a wrench in things, they could say hold on everyone, I hope that doesn't happen. Um but you could, um so it's really up to the select board if you wanna be a little bit more liberal. And so as I looked, um and the the study committee's feeling is save time wherever you can. So that we either have more time to talk about the meaty things that we're really there to talk about, or that we get home earlier.
Yeah.
Um and so as I looked at the warrant and, you know, everyone can have their own views. It struck me that the repeal of the opioid thing, it's like, who's gonna question that?
Yeah.
Um the wage table was unclear to me, I thought that might be another candidate. But you all know the politics of that a lot better than me, so. I I'm, I was offering those two as as candidates if you want to expand the consent agenda a little bit, but.
Let me, let me put it over before you comment, let me just say two things, okay? One is we have a committee of nine, that says great, so cuz more people to do stuff. But also, it's a broader swath of people, it's some younger people who don't go or haven't yet gone. Deal with young ki- I mean, there's more demographic diversity, so I respect the opinion. So when Wayne says like, should the select board sit up at the thing, you're getting, you're getting a sample size bigger than often we get, like talking about. The biggest single thing, I think, that's come out on our current focus, which is to increase participation. Is that the meeting's too long and there's too much crap. So we are thinking about ways, and Wayne's been leading this, that we can easily sort of declutter. One of them is, he's committed, I'm gonna tell, say right now, to make that preamble section, here's the fire exits, that's how you vote and then. To make it short, like fifteen minutes, because people have observed and we don't even get to the article one till seven forty five. So there's like long. So the second piece is put more stuff in the consent, zip through that. And then, as I've mentioned to Kate and you and Ryan, one thing that also came out is, hey, the police station's why I came. Like, why is it buried after all these other things like fire trucks, I don't care about those, I wanna talk about police station. Let's, you know, so lead with your lead, right? So I think just the overarching philosophy of this is let's see if we can streamline it. And this is a test bed for, you know, seeing if we can get people more engaged and say, yeah, that was a positive experience. I got home by nine thirty or whatever and, you know, we got some stuff, this.
I'm I'm completely on board with that, I support that and then I was just gonna add to this by saying that I did, you know, have some comments. On these, the consent agenda, the items that had the two asterisks, only about just explaining the magnitude of it. So for example, article five, real estate tax exemption, we didn't mention like the magnitude of that. You know, we said, oh, we're going to exempt certain people, but and and I asked Ryan, I said, you know, these are, and he said, you know, it's probably fifteen hundred dollars. Well, yeah, I think if you can, fifteen what?
Thousand.
Thousand, I'm sorry, yeah, I had that wrong, but but I said, it, well, this is another. Okay, that was a, that was a bad example. Anyway, I was, I was saying, why don't we put a little bit more information in it? So so that somebody like me doesn't raise their hand and say, well, wait a second, how much is this, I don't wanna consent. So I I made a list and I passed along to Ryan just of a couple of those things I thought could use a little more clarification as to the magnitude.
And I agree, I have my own list too for that, so that would be a good thing.
Yeah.
As consent or not, for the.
I like the philosophy of that, let's.
The, my only, uh my only concern about, I came for the police station and so why not put it before? Is what um our major job, our major job is the budget at that meeting.
Suggesting before the budget.
Ah, okay, I should.
And I'll get to it later. Well, we have the budget in the capital.
And leave before we do the budget, we don't have a form.
We would have consent agenda and budget, those are typically pretty fast.
Okay.
And then before MFC, fire truck, opioid hopefully is in consent, stabilization, G I S, Bognhausen, I mean, oh my god, my head hurts already.
Right.
And then, you know, like the biggest thing should be the first of those.
Right, this is my whole life, David.
Okay, so do we have an agreement that we could um massage the order of these articles and that we can have more in the. A consent agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah, I I agree with the the items for consent agenda that we want up.
I, I agree with it, I agree with it, alright.
Totally.
Including on the wage, the the wage.
Yeah, the wages.
Yeah. We should have talked about CPC, cuz I don't agree with that being.
Well, we have to talk, we have to hear what the ideas are, we haven't heard anything yet.
Yeah, the CPC you can't do as part of the normal consent agenda, so.
But the devil's in the details too, like on the wage thing, I had some questions on that and I think it's just getting the language of explaining it. And so we'll do that tonight or we're gonna?
Yeah, I think we have to, we have to work on the summaries to make sure that we, yeah, okay, great, we'll do that on our time and not on Wayne's.
Just a note to you, Ryan, sort of the the order, there's nothing that requires you to string all the consent agenda items together consecutively. But if you want to, you know, it's probably easier for people.
I mean, easier, yeah.
Yeah, it's easier to.
Don't confuse people.
Yeah, so I wanted to put those up as numbers nine and ten or ten or whatever comes up.
Alright.
May, may I make a recommendation?
Of course.
The, I think you should go through each one and talk about them and improve them and do the language and then I think the. Um order and whether or not they could be consent agenda will reveal itself too.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Because your level of question and debate will probably indicate everyone else's.
Okay, do you wanna put that on the screen or?
You wanna, when I, we're good.
Where in that process would you suggest we do the, whether we're, whether we wanna take a vote to approve it or not, uh so it goes in the warrant book?
As we're going.
As we're going through them or around, okay.
Okay, so now the question is though, do we need to have a little more explanation about the CPC article now or is that later?
Separate thing.
That's.
That's a separate proposal. The consent agenda for the CPA articles.
Oh, consent agenda, at the point where you.
So so you don't actually have to decide on the CPC whether to do it as a consent or not tonight. That, I mean, with the last couple of years, what I've been doing, so CPC is similar to the budget. So actually, the way we do the budget is is a form of consent agenda, we don't call it that way. But you know, way back when, there used to be a separate vote on each line item and some towns still do that.
Yeah.
So instead, we go through this, a similar exercise of saying, you know, do you wanna hold on it? So we've sort of moved, the CPC is similar in that there's supposed to be a vote on each one. And that's why we have it listed as separate motions. What we've moved to in the last couple of years to set is that we've made a judgment call after the warrant. But before the town meeting, I've, you know, I talked with this, the the committee with you. And we sort of figure out which ones look like they need to be voted separately and which can be bundled. And I've kind of handled it at the meeting and so we can still do that, you don't have to decide that tonight if it's not clear. And so we can do some of, you know, can vote all of them together or say two together and two separately. We can sort of figure that out a little bit later if you want. Okay.
Right.
Um and if you, and if you don't mind, I can actually call in and be on, be on the phone till like nine o'clock if you want.
Sure, it's eight times, you need to.
Correct, okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I will, I will log you before I get.
Okay.
Right.
Right, where are we on our list of things to do?
I'll moderate now that Wayne's leading, article one is the consent agenda itself, having one.
Yes.
And we're just decided we're adding to it.
And we can recommend that, right?
Yes.
Yes. Can I have a motion? Can I have a motion to um support article one?
So who to support article one?
Second.
As amended tonight, we add the opioid and um.
We haven't gone through that.
Yes, right.
But I thought we all just decided we're comfortable adding those two.
Okay.
Yes.
I agree with that.
Okay, so it'll say two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine and ten.
Well, that's why we should go through the whole thing, cuz it's all gonna change.
Yes, alright, right.
So it's got article two.
Article two.
That's fine.
Town reports.
We're doing each one?
No, let's not vote article one yet because we don't know what's in it.
Okay.
Okay.
Article.
Article two, town reports.
Which now includes language based on the streamlining recommendation of my um Patriot Act report, which is in there.
It it includes what?
Patriot Act report is in there now.
So you will not give it?
I'm not give it orally, it's in writing.
Thanks.
Okay, excellent, well.
Every minute's count.
It'll be added to the summary?
It is in there now.
Oh, 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 that's right.
This is the most current version.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Oh, I see, we, oh, yeah, shoot, okay, uh sorry. Um of course, select will publish an annual town report. Of course, town administrator report annually to the town meeting on any information the town's possession about the way the Patriot Act is being implemented in the town. Town administrator has reported the following, there have been no investigations implemented by town departments using the Patriot Act. Since the last annual town meeting, town meeting voters are asked to accept these annual reports as a review to matter, okay?
We don't have a vote to approve that?
So you approve the whole consent agenda at the end?
So then a non binding vote, is that, are we okay with that being in the consent agenda?
Yes.
That sounds fine.
Yes.
Let's go on.
Salaries of elected officials.
I have uh two comments.
Yes.
One is, I think again, in the, in the view of uh information transparency, we ought to do the math. On the town clerk's salary increase. And the second question is, when I did the math, I got three point three percent, why is she not at the two point two five percent that we tell everybody else they have?
So last year, the select board approved a step increase for non union employees, uh based on a positive review.
So I think we should say all that stuff in the explanation. Because otherwise, people again make question. Well, I have one other question before we answer, which is, we don't, we don't have anything here where we talk about. That there will be a ballot question about making her an appointed position, there really is no article to comment.
Yeah, it says.
Town clerk would be paid personally to the town.
Should the town.
The last sentence.
Wow, it's, it's pretty modestly written, I would say.
We should say the amount.
I I believe we should explain why the increase is three point three percent, cuz you know, people who do math will say, well, gee. You know, all the worker bees are getting two point two five, what's up with that? And we should strengthen then, I'm sorry you missed that, we should strengthen the sentence that. You know, reminds people that there is a vote the following week to move it to an appointed position.
Or maybe just to follow up in a second, that the, the. Sentence after the one that starts page four, right at the top where it says clerk is the only elected official to meet a salary. Would your suggestion be then there'd be another sentence that says um this, the amount shown. Uh represents two point two five as a cola and whatever the percentage is for the step increase per the wage.
Yeah.
S- scale, right? Which I'm fine with that too.
Yes, something like you said.
Yeah, cuz we don't know what step she's at, that's the other.
It says at grade ten.
I know grade ten, but there's the steps, that's what gives her the extra percent, cuz if she's getting a step increase.
I don't think it matters like how much that is, it's it's two point two five and she's getting a step and that's. I don't think it matters like how much that is, it's it's two point two five and she's getting a step and that explains why it's more than three point three.
That's why it's more than two point two five.
I think that's, I think, I agree.
Yeah, okay.
That's efficient.
Are you good with that line?
I am great with that one. And then, but then another line.
Your step increase given to all employees.
Maybe, maybe a whole line, reminding people at the end of this paragraph, make its own little paragraph, just a reminder that, yeah. So that's.
Or maybe it's a new paragraph below it, so it stands out a little bit.
Yeah, I'd like to stand up, cause I mean, you wanna remind people that there's.
Alright, so I think they want, are you saying you want a carriage return between expectations and should?
Yeah.
Okay, carriage return there.
Is that a typewriter reference?
I love it, isn't it great, yeah, it's a carriage.
Ching ching.
Ching ching, right.
Never heard that before?
I'm just proud of myself for knowing that.
Yeah. You're the last generation to know that.
So I would, yeah, I would be more declarative and say, uh, as a reminder, there uh, at the town meeting held on such and such a date, no, the prior one, the town approved ballot question to move the position from an elected to an appointed role and then you can say, you know, and we are voting it like next week.
Yeah, yeah.
You can fill in that. I don't know if you'd say reminder.
You could just say, start with the town.
The town voted.
Fall of twenty twenty three.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You don't see, as a reminder, you think it's too pedantic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you do.
Okay.
We're, we're, we're trying to, good writing should shrink like bacon, right, cut all the fat out of it.
Yes. The town voted upon the current town meeting to make the town clerk an appointed, should. To appointed, period. Requires town election ballot question.
See, see, see page such and such.
Which, which is. Which is, which will be held this.
Should the town votes to a top? Ballot question number three.
To be held on.
To be held on.
Yes, right, right, right.
At the.
Now, this requires a town ballot question.
Requires the town. No, it requires a town, yeah. Ballot to be held in.
To be held on.
Town ballot voter.
See page.
Town ballot vote on, in May.
I would.
On May twenty one, twenty twenty four.
Yeah.
That's in the next sentence, but we can do it.
Yeah.
No.
I think it's good. You're right, it is in the next sentence.
Yeah, it's in the next sentence, as you wrote, period.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, okay, see page, that's right, yep.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's good, much, much more.
The town voter, that's the hot question.
Okay, I'm happy. And are we, are we, we are not, are we comfortable with this?
Yeah. You might wanna say continue to be paid under the.
Now, I do think it's possible somebody will wanna hold this because they're gonna wanna ask the procedural question, right, about okay, so if at the town election this passes to make it an appointed position, what happens to the current town clerk, right? I don't know if we wanna anticipate it and put something in there, but I do think that is, could very likely come up and so this will get pulled out of the consent agenda.
But that's. That might be, but it really has nothing to do with their salary.
Yeah. No, I know it doesn't, but I'm just anticipating that that's the kind of thing, as we know, there are a few people that were very concerned about that last fall, when it was gonna be voted on, yeah.
Yeah. And it's a contested election. It's a contested. I understand, but the other thing is, it's already contested.
But let's, let's actually, let's anticipate one thing, which is, as unfortunate, it's a night chart, but since you identified that she would move to, now stick with her, she, you've identified that she would move to grade ten.
Yeah.
Is the band of grade ten within the?
It's an hourly rate, so you'd have to do a whole lot of.
I'm not asking you us to do that, I'm just saying.
Yes, it is, yes.
So should we then say her salary would not change as a result, her current salary, the voted salary would not change as a result of that?
It does, so it says.
You say continue to be paid, but, so is Wayne continuing to be paid fifty bucks?
So this article does that.
It's not.
So we've tied it to the plan.
Would continue to be paid.
It does, it does require this vote to pay an elected official.
Okay, but I think you should.
I understand, I think what the, you're missing the point, what I think, allow me to elucidate.
He says, I'm not having a lot.
Um, he wants to make it clear that the number that's up there is the same as if she, it is calculated from the, the chart that's down below.
That the grade ten position will be the same amount of money as what's shown in the chart above.
The grade ten. Yes, that's right.
If you approve her salary, that's how much she'll get regardless of, if, if the vote, even if the vote.
She would not be paid any differently, is, is basically.
To me, this is what this says.
That's what I think.
Do you want me to do the math, is that what you're saying?
No, you don't have to do the math, you just have to say the clerk would be continued to pay.
Well, that's what it says.
As.
It's exactly what it says.
Yeah.
Well, what it doesn't say is, a grade ten position is equivalent to the money that's shown above for her.
No, I wrote to Article nine, I'm saying Article three, this one. I think we should say she would continue to be paid pursuant to approved arti- misapproved Article three and.
Okay, so wait a second, let's, 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 what if we put that at the top, the first paragraph? Clerk is the only uh official that's paid a salary, the position was added to the wage and classification plan on twenty three at twenty at grade ten. The amount shown includes the townwide two point two five cola in addition to a step increase given to all employees, well, actually, that's what it says.
That's exactly what it says.
Okay, I'm gonna try it, let's try this, the amount shown above, just add the one word, I'm gonna be spare.
Okay. Yeah.
I mean, people, you, you guys assume knowledge by people, they don't know something.
Yeah, shown above, right, right, yeah. So a little.
Amount shown above.
Second line on this, this page four, yeah.
Is there enough bacon stripping for you, Mr.?
You're gonna be sorry, Ryan, you want us to go through it word by word.
That smell.
It's bad, it's not the bacon, you wanna get to the bacon, not the, not the fat.
So that ties the amount, okay, and I'll, I'll, I'll actually give up the other.
Right.
I love this.
Okay.
What? I love this.
Alright.
It's good enough, this is the point.
It's good now, alright, let's go.
Alright.
Open.
Wow, that's amazing.
Oh, uh, oh, yeah.
So we do this every two years, we appropriate three thousand per year, it costs a little under six thousand.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so it's, is, yeah, you, I'm glad you put that number in consensus.
You're gonna cut out the select board finance committee things, right, cause it's other to be consented.
Uh, each one is identified by who put it on there, even if it's in the consent.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question?
Okay. I got it.
Yeah.
This is identifying who, who put it on.
Who puts. It's not a mark.
I see, gotcha.
Okay, um, assuming you guys are okay with it.
Yes, that's good.
I'm good, yeah.
Cause it's required, so.
Then I don't think we should do it.
The. Okay, Article five, so Article five, I talked to the assessors today, you have approved everything you can approve under the statute unless you wanna go even further, which is a whole nother debate. So this isn't approved annually, you've already approved it, so it can be taken out.
Okay, great.
Already passed this clause to the extent that's shown here and it is valid, I confirmed it with the assessors. What we can talk about is increasing this next year to help senior taxpayers, but right now.
Yeah, you can strike it.
It can go.
Okay.
But Travis, is this where you wanted to include what the total cost is every year?
No, no. If, if it was in there, but, but I, I was thinking it's more, is my objective was to, like, what you're saying is cut down on objections that come up
Yeah.
that then would delay this and someone would say, what's the magnitude, how much is that? And so, let's, take this, if you can get it out of here, that's fine too, because we've already discussed it and.
So, so that's.
So this time we don't have.
Okay, that's it. Even better.
Even better.
So you're suggesting, Travis, that we should put in a figure for what the magnitude is.
We should have meetings.
No, we're gonna remove Article five.
Oh, we're removing it, sorry, I missed that, sorry, 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 okay, great.
No. We're removing it.
Yes.
Okay. Alright.
That is streamlined.
Onzo.
Okay.
Okay, Article six allows you to.
Is now Article five, okay, well, we should change them because, or highlight it then, okay.
Well, he'll, you can.
Okay.
Okay, chapter ninety, this allows you to spend chapter ninety.
Yeah, this is totally routine.
Yeah, and I like that one because it puts approximately two hundred fifty thousand, so it uh.
Tells us how, yeah, how much.
It tells us what's going on, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's great.
Okay, Article six, PIG, we all, like, we know and love.
We have a special.
This is where you've changed. No, okay, sorry.
It did add.
It doesn't, what it doesn't say though there, hold on just a second, um. Oh, go down to the next page, obviously. Okay, it's, okay, you did it, cause I was in the earlier version.
The reason I asked about it.
Didn't say what you withdrew the funds for and you said it here.
Right.
Good, okay.
One small uh thing, you need to add an S to the word assist at the top of that next page, on page five.
Assist.
This fund also assists, yeah.
Okay, this is seven now?
I asked, which is, you know, I asked about the, all these screens, you know, I didn't realize that, and all, all of our stuff in town hall is came from, from PIG, unaware, sorry.
Yeah, that's good.
Including the mics.
The new mics, yay.
Article seven, department, so if you wanted to add a subtractive fund, it would be done here, that's not being suggested this year. This sets the spending limit for the departments that have revolving funds, so I have those if you wanna see them. Kelly has worked with each department and makes sure that they have enough to cover their costs.
Yeah, more, more importantly, we need to have a different sort of a limit, and that's how much they can sit on, not how much they can spend.
No, but.
But for this, for the purpose of.
That is not this.
But for, for this, this is, this is good, yes.
This meeting is fine, and it's not generating challenge, so it's good.
Right, exactly.
So this, um, the actual amounts will be printed in the motion book, if we find it to be confusing.
Yes.
Oh, by each revolving fund, you mean?
Yeah.
It'll be in the motion, but not in the warrant.
Right. Uh, do you wanna say that, say that in the summary? Say that the actual amounts that, you know, will be in the motion book?
Amounts of each fund.
Is, is printed in the motion book?
Yeah.
So is it capital N motion book?
Sure.
I don't know.
The actual amounts, amounts is plural, sorry, but, so amounts are printed.
Are. Are, no, that's a.
Amounts, yeah, for, good job, Bernie.
Sorry.
Yes, well, thank.
I love it.
Okay, that's why we have made so eight.
New eight.
Salary wage tables, okay.
So will this be going in the consent agenda?
I, I think.
I don't see why not, because, you know.
We were saying.
Yeah.
I, I have.
Um, do you wanna say though, in the summary, that we, this was adopted, um, when did we do this, last spring?
You have to do it every year.
I know, but we've already considered it once, right, this is not a new.
Yeah, no, it's a new one, it's new every year.
No, it's new for this year. Every year, every year.
Okay.
It was changed a lot last year, but it has to be.
Yeah, okay, that's what I'm thinking, okay, alright, nevermind.
Well, I, um, my minor recommendation is to bold the last sentence of the summary just to make sure that they're clear that it's a two point two five percent cola, cause that's, I, I don't know about bolding anything.
Yeah, this table describes the wages.
Cause it's confusing. As much as you want, you know what, you don't bold, I mean, they got bold in articles up there.
Okay, so you don't bold it.
Um, but I would, I asked Ryan the question relative to the amounts there, if it's not apparent or wasn't clear to me that that was the wage per hour. I don't know if you needed to say that, cause someone may say, like I did, what does that mean, is that like the percentage?
Is that thousands?
I think you should say that, okay.
Got it, yeah, got it.
I agree, that sounds smart, you should say that. Listing all positions according to the actual hourly wage.
You can say.
Just next line, uh, the last, after your title, then your title centered, um, put, uh, all, all numbers represent hourly wage rates.
What?
Okay.
Yeah, okay, perfect, and then.
That's good, then it's right there.
Expressed in hourly rates.
Yeah. Or express, yeah, right, expressed in hourly rates.
Express the heads up.
This is fun.
Alright.
You get a lot of help with it.
Let's see what I do all day.
Yes, alright, and then of course, we're gonna.
You got three chiefs and one Indian, or four chiefs and one, five chiefs and one Indian.
Alright.
Yeah, good. And you'll do the spacing later.
Bernie, if you didn't notice, the traffic safety member is a part-time police officer, so I added the asterisks.
Gotcha, thank you, I was asking what that was.
So do we wanna slot opioid in here to keep the numbers?
Oh, number nine?
It's actually number fourteen, oh fourteen.
Yeah, I'm. Oh, fourteen. Fourteen, yes. X.
How do we do before a word?
Hmm, I know.
Well, I can tell you.
I know, no, I know, I tell my kids about this, like, this electric is like a big deal in my.
Character.
You have the little uh, correction tape?
Yeah, that was a big deal, you could like correct a word, you're like, what?
Yeah.
It's huge. Maybe you wanna put it, okay.
These were shorter, they didn't have to.
Yeah, now you're back to.
Actually, I was, I used typetits.
One. The nine, oh, yeah, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, I put that.
Typetits.
The typetits, they were like a sigma, big sigma, you know, or a big, you know, what do you call it, some, the symbols, and they were on a plastic something, you'd stick it in there and then you could, I didn't have it, so like.
Oh, cause you didn't have it, oh, I.
Alright, so the consent agenda is complete, sorry.
Thank you.
Alright, okay.
And did you put your double asterisk next to item nine?
I did, so.
Okay.
So it's through nine now?
Recommend all of them.
Is it through nine?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, cause it was gonna be through ten.
I moved that the select board recommend approval of the consenting agenda article one.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey.
Hey.
Yeah, so we zip it through town meeting. Um, just let's do a thing where you have this one.
Nine double asterisks?
Yes, no, you didn't, and you didn't put the double asterisk on it.
We disagree.
It is, I have, by fund.
Oh, I see, sorry, I'm at the end of it.
You, uh, just on the summary for that opioid, um, article, um. I guess that's fine, I was thinking you might wanna lead with that, we've approved it, but that's fine.
I thought it was.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Ten.
Ten, your operating budget.
Now, this is where.
I'd like to pause here just to show you very minor changes that have happened since last office. So the library. We changed the wages, so we decreased, that's not showing, that's not. So this is the total, uh, wages minus custodial, maintenance and custodial, that was five ten, it dropped to five seven. The, uh, custodial was around forty and it went up to almost forty-two, so this was a library that made that change. This does equate to a three percent increase as was asked by the finance committee and the select board, and is the exact numbers that are needed per the library and vetted by us, so inappropriate change, the. Second one. God, I have too many thoughts, alright, um.
Next time I'm gonna bring treats.
Wasn't that?
Bring treats next time. Candy or peanuts.
Or every time we move through something and make a vote, we could all get a, you know, chocolate Hershey's kiss, yeah.
I'm not, because my dog is a button, he can push and it says cookie please.
Jeez.
We could give each of us a button.
Does he push it constantly?
No, just when you, just largely after dinner, he wants.
Yeah, really, mine would be.
Sorry, I got it, okay. I was thinking, all the remaining ones are with the board of health, so the, there was a transcription error that resulted in a two hundred and seventy-one dollar difference. With the board of health. Hot, so basically I just shifted the lines down, it was two hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Did we, um, sort out that where the lunch fund's gonna pay for the lunch inspection, the food?
And where does that money go, yeah?
So the board of health discussed with school committee's approval, uh, spending four seventy-five out of the, um, school lunch. But then they insisted with their unlimited authority that it'd stay in, so, um, we're here with the four hundred and seventy-five dollar.
Why not?
I think mostly for control.
So I'm, no, wait, I'm confused. Yeah. This, this four seventy-five is in the board of health budget, is that what you're saying?
Yes, and you could account for it in a revolving fund that could be used for nothing else.
We had proposed at the request of the board of health. I sat on a board of health meeting and was talking to them about the budget, and they actually came up with an idea, maybe that charge. I was talking to them about unused revolving funds like school lunch, I think Patrick, one of them, came up with that idea, which I thought was a good idea. So I said, great, I'm gonna put you in touch with Sarah, which I did do.
Yeah.
Then I also sat in on the budget meeting of the school committee, which I'm also liaison of, and they approved that thing.
To transfer that money to?
To not transfer the money, to use the school lunch fund for its peanuts, but.
Yes, okay, so.
It was simple, it was symbolic of two things that I felt were important. One is using revolving fund, funds up for things that.
Yes.
And two is it was nice cooperation between the two boards.
Right.
As facilitated by me.
Right.
To say, hey, you can save a little money, right?
Okay.
So I'm a little disappointed, I have.
So this four seventy-five did not come out of?
It's peanuts, I don't care, but I am disapp, I'm gonna publicly say I'm disappointed that they didn't just do it, like. If we can't get along on those little things, are we gonna get along on the big things, right? That's, that's all I wanna say.
I most wholeheartedly agree. Um, but, um, well. It's our budget.
It's your budget, that's correct.
And I think it should be a vote of this board, whether it's, stays in there or not.
Sure, you're the chair.
Is this what you wanna fight about?
No, but I think it should be, I, I think David is not the only one that's disappointed.
Right, but I'm, I'm registered.
And there should, there should be a message sent.
Well, we can express that in the.
That's my point.
So, my, my opinion would happen is the board of health made a decision. They have, uh, invested power in their department head and treasurer position, which they created in order to amend the budget. And they were, um, so mad about the other things that they just ignore the fact that this was already discussed.
Let's not hypothesize, I.
No, I'm a hundred percent sure.
Okay, but, I mean, I think, again, I'll say publicly, I think there's a lot of fence mending to be done between our board and the board of health. I don't wanna get into it tonight, but I reasonably believe there's a lot of fence mending, so picking this fight's probably not helpful. You've said it, I personally, as the liaison, I wanna make it more of a priority in coming here to.
Are they at the three percent, are they at three percent with this number?
They're four point four four percent.
See, that's what I'm, that's why I'm not happy. I mean, not only are they not at three percent.
Yep.
And they, they the ones that are choosing to pick this fight, not us.
Okay, fair enough.
And I've forgotten, was, was, um, were there some items on the table, uh, to get them down to three percent?
There was a proposal that they use their revolving account in order to defer the increase in costs.
Right.
They added the four seventy-five for food inspection because they don't have the ability to inspect the kitchen.
Yeah.
So we need to add a position in order to inspect the kitchen.
Or class to, to one of the positions to, to train them up so that they could do this themselves, I wonder how much that costs.
No, yeah, but I mean, it's probably giving us a once a year inspection, I'm guessing, and make by decision is go outside, pay four seventy-five. So that's what the lunch fund should be.
I, I think it's four hundred and seventy-five dollars, it's not gonna move the needle, and that we should have the discussion with them about the budget in the future, I don't think we're going to be able to sit here and get them down to three percent.
You're absolutely right.
Tonight, so it's kinda like the water's gone under the bridge, I think we just.
As Ryan went up, the bigger savings.
Wanna go and move on and.
The revolve, use of revolving.
Address the relationship then come a year.
Yeah.
I agree with you. Well said, well said.
I think we have to be very careful about who we appoint, appoint coming up.
I don't think it's the board health, I think you have the department head making budget decisions, that's what I think.
I think it's not helpful to be having this dialogue at this.
Alright, but I think we're ready to move on, that's the sense, right?
Yep, yeah, it would not be tolerated in any other department, including.
I mean, I, yeah, I'm, I'm not happy at all, I think, and, and frankly, the budget is where we have the control.
Alright, well, we'll file this one for our goals discussion.
Change their budget number, the bottom line, we don't, we wouldn't have to change any of the individual ones, but we could, I mean.
It's a little, it's just a little late in the game.
Bigger context of how we want to handle the board health. Break down those silos.
Okay.
Hi. Hi.
So the operating budget, so that does not change the high level numbers that were discussed, the three point one percent average tax bill increase or the three point oh six percent overall operating budget increase.
So, so can I ask you if you, I presume as we normally do that the FinCom chair will give a presentation about the budget, or you will do it?
So the, uh, FinCom is creating that now, they will have a public budget hearing on the seventeenth and create the PowerPoint for town meeting and give the budget presentation.
Seventeenth as in four seventeen will be the hearing.
Yes.
Day of the week is that? It's a Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
Okay, and that's gonna be publicized? Whose meeting is that, that it's going to be done at?
FinCom.
Their public hearing.
Their meeting, okay, great, and, and is it Lynn still, she's the chairman, yeah, okay, um. So your, the thing that's in the packet, that's your explanation of the budget, that's supplementary to whatever would be presented, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, it was excellent, but if what they're gonna see in the. Where are you right now?
So I'm just showing, uh, finishing my sentence, that the, uh, this is the total budget number that would be recommended, you can change that number. And the, the increase is exactly the same, so those changes, which I wanna be transparent about, did not have any high level impact on the budget.
Yeah.
So there's no percentage in the, back to the warrant book.
That's what I was.
There is no actual percentage.
What's our thinking on not putting the percentage change from twenty-four to twenty-five?
There's of the budget?
Just tradition.
Kelly and I created the chart that's been created the last couple of years.
Yeah, but it's a very, I mean, tradition.
Cause I was thinking it would be helpful to see, cause if you're a, you know, if you're somebody that's not really a numbers person, you could just look at. You could be sort of misled, I suppose, by some of the numbers that may look like they're.
Where are you talking about putting it?
On the bottom line.
Just the bottom line.
Bottom, is it there?
It's, uh, three point oh six percent, so it takes some ties, it would be useful to put it, maybe she'll do it in her presentation.
Is it in the summary?
Well, there is no summary, so we could put a summary.
Alright, so I understand what you're saying, so this chart is what you need to actually vote.
Right.
The, um, supplementary materials show all of the, the data, we'll pass those out and have them available, so this is how to get the budget voted.
Okay.
But for those whose eyes glaze, glaze over at, you know, the details and the mechanisms, they're basically wanna wanna know. How much did you increase the budget by, and if you say three or three, if we say like we, kinda what we're seeing with the police station, like our
Hmm.
Goal was three and we got the three point oh six, like, okay, you know, and we recommend it.
You're an optimist.
Does it make sense to put a little summary then below this chart? Would you just say that? Yeah.
Is any of this just in the budget book? I, I'm sorry, I've been.
Yeah, it's in great detail.
Why, why, why do we not then just say, uh, and see the budget book?
Because most people will not go through all of that.
They'll look if they want to know what percentage change this is. Well, yes, I think, let me again say. Uh, the objective of the town meeting committee is primarily to increase participation. And the way to increase participation, there are a lot of ideas that are floating around, but one of the biggest ideas is make it ease accessible. Make the information accessible, make people interested in participating, which has a lot of pieces to it, I don't wanna go into it right now. But one of them is, when you do the QR code and you get this, you're gonna look quickly to see if there's things that interest you. If you have to wade through minutia, you're like, ah, it's too complicated, I gotta stay with the kids. I mean, we're trying, I don't know that, but we're trying to make it like, hey, this is like important stuff, it's upfront, it's easy, I, I just feel like this is the good place to put those little summaries.
I think if you're talking about adding percentages, I think that's great, for one line, you're talking about adding one line here to the bottom of that, and, is it?
Right, the above represents a three point oh six percent increase in our budget, in line with our goals.
Be key, that's kinda what we've worked through all this whole six months of coming up with the budget. Yeah. Would you put it at the end of the summary, or at the end of the?
Just right here at the end of the, at the budget.
The above, the above total represents an increase of three point oh six percent in line with the select board's financial goals for the.
Why is it estimated?
Yeah, the above.
The above.
Above chart.
The above.
Budget.
Budget totals, so the chart is to, is to show transparency, it's not required, it's not in the actual warrant. It's just a addition to be transparent, you don't need it, you can take it out.
Yeah, but you're voting a budget, you have to have numbers to.
In the motion book, the warrant is just a, an advertisement of what's coming.
Yeah.
Yeah. I see, that's why I still don't estimate this.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
So wait, this is not going in the warrant?
Yes, it is going in the warrant, but.
Saying that the actual motion will have a real number, we reserve the right, it's kinda like the wing, right?
It's like with the police department, yeah.
Until the day.
But you see where.
Well, they just gonna get them a URL.
Okay.
Where is the thing you wrote gonna show up, is that gonna be in the URL?
Yes.
And I've forgotten, did you capitalize budget book on your other ones? Is it a defined term or not? I don't remember. But you could check that. You could check, I don't know if you wanted it defined or not. Is that, is that its title? Town budget book?
I don't care.
Cause town normally isn't capitalized.
Town is.
Is capitalized, okay.
That I'm sure of.
Yeah, there you go.
Like state.
I don't think you need to say linked here if you put that.
Yeah, that's fine.
We're cutting out fat.
Watch out, Ryan, alright, move us along, Ryan, move us along.
Airlines conclude that everybody knows how to put out.
I moved that the select board recen- recommend approval of article ten.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. I'm gonna see an analyst.
Okay, capital equipment, total of six hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred.
Yeah, so in that one again, and in your presentation, you show, there's two things that aren't here, so one is the source of the money, which is different sources, which you had, I guess this one's all free cash actually. So it's not stated that this comes out of free cash and you have your thing about using free cash. The, and then the second thing is you have a really nice chart that shows kind of the multi-year capital plan, and there's no context here. So is there, you know, it'd be nice if we referred to it or something like that, cause again, this is taken in isolation. What does six hundred and fifty thousand mean compared with what?
And the list of necessary items was vetted by both boards in consultation with town departments and compared to priorities identified in a five-year plan, which can be found.
Yep. So it would be compared with, actually.
Okay.
And do you, are you suggesting that there also be an explanation in the summary about how this gets paid for?
Well, again, now let me go back to a different question, who is presenting, is Lynn also presenting the capital plan as part of her presentation?
Yes.
Okay, and those, those most, that presentation precedes the two articles, right, obviously?
It comes before.
It, well, this, wait, um, in the article, it always shows where the money is coming from. It usually either says by bonding or other what, you know, or free cash, in this case, it is.
Is it continuing to, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be pejorative, but you're continuing to confuse the warrant with the motion book, so the motion book has a lot more detail.
Yeah.
With the exact identification, the warrant gives you with some.
So let me ask you a question, when I get my postcard and I take a picture of the QR code, what comes up?
The town meeting website with the warrant.
Yes.
Yes, right?
Yes.
Just saying, put the information.
Well.
This doesn't come up, it, it brings you to the, so I'll show you. So what shows up is this page.
Yep.
Which will have the warrant and budget book here once approved.
Right.
And then every article has linked documents and presentations.
So go to the budget.
It's not done yet. We're still approving it.
Okay, well.
Building the plane, we're flying it.
Yeah, um, I don't know, I don't think most people care about where it gets paid from. It's all town money, and as far as the people that are voting, it's, it's all their money.
The capital plan will also include a, a detailed explanation about unspent bond proceeds. So part of the money is, is tied to the wastewater treatment facility plant with the unspent bond, the rest of it will be free cash. But if something happens between now and then, you can't change it, or you could change it, but it would be more confusing.
Okay, so taking Kate's point under consideration. I, I guess my recommendation to Lynn, through you to Lynn, would be we should at least, she should, I, she should use some pieces of what you developed as a framework to walk people through, just basically, without, not so much on a numbers basis, but like theoretically. What you said, we're, we're using unspent old money to pay for stuff, and we happen to be relatively fl- flush with free cash and we're rolling free cash into these one-time expenditures, I mean, if people who bother to go one level down from this, at least see that or hear it in the presentation.
Well, they hear, and they will, definitely hear it in the motion, cause the motion will be different from this, from the warrant, and so.
I moved the select board recommends passage of article eleven.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Is the, um, the hearing will cover capex as well then?
Okay, article twelve is municipal facilities.
Um, can I just ask one thing here, do we, before we keep going through, do we want to take the police station article and move it up to after the, uh? Didn't we just, we wanted to move it to right after we did the budget?
That would be the recommendation of the town meeting.
Or where, where do you want it?
This, this is, this is.
Or municipal facilities?
Because municipal facilities is like the, uh, the rest of the long-term caps, I think it's related, not.
So after municipal facilities?
Yeah.
After all the financial.
Yeah.
Items?
True.
Yeah, I think that's right. I'm losing my.
So, will the motion book then have, go up just a smidge? Will the motion book break down the five twenty into those buckets?
No.
It is a general amount, isn't it?
Yes.
It's not tied to specific.
It's not tied to a specific thing. So, I mean. So, a casual reader will say, well, why is police station there, I thought we're building a new one? Or rebuilding.
Because if there's a an emergency situation at the police station, that just due to maintenance, and the MFC does have the authority to fix it and reprioritize this one.
Is MFC giving a presentation of this article?
They can.
Do we want them to? Or is it day minimus, I mean, it's half a million bucks, I don't know if it's worth somebody standing up and saying what they're working on?
They have in the past, Jerry's done it.
Yeah, this would be the first time when things start to actually itemize.
Correct.
Right. Right, it's always been itemized. I don't know that you need to.
But what, so sometimes it is, sometimes it isn't, itemized, you, the town, not you have gone back and forth.
Yes, we have.
Well, you wouldn't necessarily have to itemize, but, uh, somebody like whoever is leading the charge there could, uh, could say Jerry or who, who's the chair?
Jerry.
Jerry, could say, you know, these are the pri, these are the priorities. Could say that we're working on.
You know.
It's also in the.
I think the summary covers it.
Okay.
Just fine, but.
I'm okay. I would like Travis.
If somebody gets gets up and asks questions, then Jerry could be prepared in the way.
Yeah, but then, you know, there's maintenance, you know.
Okay, I'm good, I'm good.
Need a better title.
Than what?
Municipal facilities.
Maintenance.
Ongoing maintenance.
Ongoing maintenance.
Municipal facilities maintenance or, I mean, that's.
I like that.
Well, I don't know, that's what we're trying to say that.
Yeah. Or municipal facility.
I would use the word management, but. Management?
It does also say improvement projects.
Management.
Uh, that could be people though, management is like.
Well, it's facilities management, but uh. I like maintenance. Maintenance.
I moved the select board approves recommend approval of Article twelve.
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so thirteen.
New thirteen.
Is there already the fire engine?
Police in now or still?
Oh, oh, police station.
The police in.
Well, of course, this is a big one too, just not forget, nine hundred and fifty thousand, but okay, so we'll do it in order of of, yes, order of, uh. Fine, let's do the police station.
Yes, 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 yes.
Yes. So, police station.
Five bosses and they're all Friday.
I. I do want time to read these a little bit because I know you're buzzing through them quickly and. They've changed a little bit since the version that I read.
Yes.
This, more the summaries than the article, well, I guess the article summary.
So this one, we've decided we're taking out the dollar amount, correct?
Yes.
In the article itself.
And I did talk to bond council, so vote to appropriate a sum of money.
Or, I have. To pay the cost of designing, okay.
You don't need a comma?
Yeah, the comma. Good. All right. It's approved proposed, um.
Is it the warrant or is it the town warrant, or what's your defined term?
It's all right, this this warrant.
This town warrant?
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know, whatever it is.
Town meeting warrants printed?
I don't know what, I just want to be consistent. One million, the goal is.
Now, why did we put in a small amount? You just wanted to, in the last sentence.
Add a small amount of.
Community space.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't you just say we'll add a, we'll add.
Yeah.
An additional community space on the first, or is it a shared community training space, is that what it is? We'll add community, yeah.
Yeah.
Because when you say small amount, I don't know what kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah, look it up.
We're community programming and increasing the amount of community space available to residents. All right.
And then there will be obviously presentation.
Yes.
By whom?
We are thinking that it would be the police chief followed by someone to talk financial, followed by the police station renovation committee chair.
On financial in terms of the cost.
Cost and impact, so.
Cost impact to the taxpayer as well?
Yeah, why it's needed, the impact, and then the process and how you feel comfortable with the numbers, et cetera.
If you want to put a sentence after the very first one where you say three point one million to say, um, a, a, um. A new estimate may be provided at town meeting or something like that, or at.
An updated.
An updated, yeah.
I don't know. Because we're gonna do that anyway, and and I think there, I don't know, it just seems.
Just a little.
Back to the problem of not being very strong about what we're doing, but I don't know, I guess transparency.
It just explains that the number may change, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's estimated it's at this point, an updated number. As well, yeah, okay. Because this was already, this number's also based on a profess- on a professional estimate, but it's okay. But leave it as such, I don't want.
Get it to death.
There, um.
I moved the select board recommend. Uh, passage of Article uh, uh, thirteen.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Article fourteen is the fire engine, so we did reach out to get the most current estimate. The most current estimate based off a stripped-down fire engine. From what it could be. More than just like the chassis, but less than, you know, what the fire department would ask for, if given unlimited money, is nine hundred and seventy-five thousand. To be delivered between now and three years. So we are estimating this cost.
When do they, like? If you reach a purchase agreement with the provider, do they freeze the money at that point, you pay them some down payment, they get to work?
That's our understanding, but that was the same understanding we had with the D W truck, and they told us to sue them.
So they raised it midstream?
Yeah.
So like if they said nine hundred and seventy-five, please put four hundred thousand down, we send them four hundred thousand. They could say later, oops, sorry, it's, we need another two hundred thousand.
So we wouldn't give them a deposit, I mean, we'd give them a much smaller deposit, but um, we would get that back.
So the answer is, it's not frozen, so if it's more than our borrowing, we can make it up, like the earlier discussion. You don't necessarily have to go back to the town, we just gotta scrounge around the seat cushions and find the money, right?
So that means or any other amount?
No, I don't think that means it.
That means it's.
We appropriate what we appropriate.
Means.
But if. If they came back with a bigger bill, we don't have to go to the town for a vote if we have extra money.
Yeah, as long as you have enough extra money.
Just gives you the borrowing. Any other amount is the motion of the time, right, it's how much you vote that day.
So we could adjust to the town meeting, this one won't adjust.
So are we in the rules of nine, like you don't wanna say a million bucks?
Are you understanding what that um, explanation was about the?
Yeah, it allows the town to pay more if we need to, but it has to come out of the town budget or somewhere else. To do it, but the town's only appropriated nine seventy-five.
A borrowing.
A borrowing.
You only borrow that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what that or any other amount allows you to do is change the motion at town meeting?
Yeah, that's all that does, yeah, I I didn't think that had been understood. It does not allow you to uh, look for more money later, this, that's not what that or any other amount is in there for.
Just means you can change it.
It just means that the motion might not say nine seventy-five.
It also says.
It can't say.
And also says, shall be raised by borrowing or otherwise, so in the motion it will say borrowing.
But, okay, maybe I don't follow this, and I thought the nine seventy-five, to Wayne's point, if it comes in and the fire depart- fire truck is a million and five. We're out of luck, we can only borrow nine seventy-five.
Yeah, but you can fight for cash.
Unless we know it before town meeting.
Okay.
In which case that number can be adjusted at town meeting, and that's why that's in there.
Right, that's why that's in there, but we won't know with three years from that price in three weeks.
Okay.
So we.
Do we wanna use that in the other motion? The fire, the chief, the police department motion, or any?
It says or any other.
I think.
Did we have that, okay.
Uh, actually, we, it's even better, it says.
We took it out.
We took it out. So here's, well.
All right, so I wish Wayne was here, but council disagrees, you can change the number to anything. Moderator says it needs to be within the original tolerance, and it's probably true somewhere in between, so the. Or any other amount allows you to adjust this, so if the police chief came running into town meetings and it's actually gonna be nine hundred and eighty thousand, we could change that number. Once you vote it though, with the motion, that's it, you can't change it, then you would have to use the other budget. So a lot of towns with their warrant language keep it very bland, like, we're gonna raise money from somewhere for this thing.
Whatever it costs.
And then at the motion book, it's very specific.
Well, so that's, that's why the, right, I think Travis, what you're saying is, well, maybe we should take the nine seventy-five out of this actual article, it just says. We'll vote to appropriate, you know, a sum to pay the cost of, and then the nine seventy-five is in the summary as the current. Estimate is that this will cost nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, I I don't, I don't have the opinion one way or the other, but is that what you were suggesting?
This one's not gonna change.
It's not gonna change.
Okay. So let's leave this like this.
All right.
All right.
Yep.
Go forward, Nathan.
I moved this select board. Uh, recommend approval of Article fourteen.
Fourteen.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Did you say aye, Nathan?
Aye. Okay, that was good.
Okay, so this one is um, a transfer to capital stabilization, and it just says a sum of money from somewhere. It'll likely be recommended at three hundred thousand from free cash. Just keeping some flexibility.
Yeah.
Right, but.
So it.
You have to capitalize town if you're.
Ah, the circle moves available funds, not a pretty specific reason to, the town savings account. Called the capitalization.
Where?
And it shall seek to increase.
I'll see the town under summary, the, oh, town savings account.
So if you're gonna capitalize.
I'm not sure the own officials needs to be capitalized. Seek to increase this saving. So are you gonna make reference to? The actual amount of, we don't have to say it, it's in the motions book, you don't have to refer to that. Okay. Is there, now, this is a new thing. Is it gonna need any kind of presentation, or are we just gonna assume that people have questions? You will speak to it?
It'd be in the budget presentation, and it is in the budget book.
Okay.
Why don't we point to the budget book in the summary?
Yep.
I agree with that. Yeah, I hope that looks right.
I moved the select board recommend. Passage of Article fourteen.
Second.
Fifteen. Second.
All those, eh, well, any more discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Okay, the GIS, um, presentation Julie gave you tied to the GIS strategic plan with three years' worth of costs.
Travis, read it.
I just wanna read it.
Okay.
I wonder when you say published GIS strategic plan, do you wanna reference how to find that?
It's the next sentence.
Oh, on the town website, oh, okay, it'll be in that same.
Actually put the link.
Sorry, I hadn't read the lessons.
It's okay, I had that same comment earlier.
Yeah.
That was yesterday.
I I like that we say it's spearheaded by the town planner, but I would like to say on behalf of. The, you know, whatever other departments are gonna be using this, for instance, assessors, uh, DPW. Because uh, it.
By the town planner on on behalf of.
Many town departments that will be, will uh, benefit or be using, be using and benefit from this, you know, or something, because. You just feel like you don't want it to look like it's only.
It's her project.
It's her project.
Well, it's the planning board is saying, but.
Well.
Planning board's looking to do this, and they're, they've delegated it to the town planner.
I'm sure that they were looking to do it, I think a lot of departments were looking to do it.
Okay. All right, fair enough, fair enough.
And I, so I just wanna make sure that's, that's uh.
What would you add?
What would you put?
Well, is it spearheaded by the town planner on behalf of all town departments?
Yeah. Or many of the town but departments who will be, uh, whose work will be, uh. Much more efficient as a result or whatever, I I don't know how you wanna put it, but I think it's important to. For people to understand that it's not just a planning board tool, it's a tool for everybody and it's gonna, you know. Including the residents, will be able to get information.
On behalf of multiple towns.
Should, should uh, Julie, she's a pretty effective presenter, should she give a presentation?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah, but I, again, I want her, I want it understood in the summary that that this is not just planning board, it is.
Or do you wanna say for use by all town departments?
And residents.
Yeah, it does say that a little layer, accessible to staff and the public.
Okay. Okay.
Great.
So do we, uh, this is, we already changed the number, okay, good.
Uh, wanna make a motion?
Nathan's the motion maker. Um, just a second.
I moved it select board, I recommend passage of Article sixteen.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, cranberry bog maintenance, this was the um, removal of this from the operating budget from the. Uh, conservation commission in consultation with the conservation commission. To not only address deferred maintenance at the bog, but to develop a longer-term plan and budget for that activity.
My only comment on this was it didn't, wasn't very clear as to what the the improving and maintaining, but. I mentioned it to Ryan, and he said that they're gonna do a presentation, and I think that's.
There is, there'll be a presentation by the cons count or by the bog.
My understanding is the cons count.
They're bringing it.
Yeah.
No.
He's you.
Really?
They want me to.
Just fucking, what am I gonna say?
What?
Um, the officials, you can, don't have to capitalize the L.
So this is not, is is the bog house ten K in this?
No.
This is, that's a different.
This is just to, my understanding is just to get for them to study. So that it kind of for the next year, what what we're gonna do, what we're gonna do with the cranberry bog.
That they didn't like that the people.
This isn't the dam though, this isn't the study for the dam.
This is long-term.
Didn't we have a committee doing that for the passport?
This is just sixteen thousand dollars to s- to delay another year.
This is, that's not what this says, though.
No, it isn't, this is.
This is actual work.
Yeah, Travis, it's not.
This isn't a study.
They, they had more maintenance expenses than they were able to cover in their budget request. Three percent budget request.
I had that wrong.
So, yeah, so this is, you know, when they came to us and said, and we had the discussion about moving. The maintenance of all our town land into a general maintenance budget for FY twenty-six, this is a stopgap between. Now and twenty-six, and so it's to allow them to catch up on the maintenance that had.
And you, this would not be under the purview of municipal facilities, because it's not a facility.
Right.
Right.
It's a thing that the cons count.
It's so that we didn't have to increase their budget a hundred, you know, fifty percent, or whatever, and to, over, more than the three percent.
But if this gets voted down. They're stuck with, I guess, whatever parameter they've got.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah, they'll have to come back.
I think it makes sense to do exactly what we're doing here.
Yeah, no, it's, it's deferred maintenance and we, yeah. I agree.
You do?
Good.
All right.
So, then let's uh, make our motion.
I moved the select board recommend passage of Article seventeen.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so now we're at eighteen.
How many are there? That's it, this is the last one.
This is last one?
But it's five in one, so.
Five for the precious one.
Okay, so the difference between, do you wanna do this or?
You can go for it, sure.
Difference between article eighteen and the CPA consent agenda. Which I'll explain is. As detailed below in numerals one through five, so this allows. The town meeting to vote the entire recommendation slate, so all five CPA recommendations. But like a consent agenda, if someone wants to hold one of them, they can and Wayne's gonna give them a chance to do that. So it's like the consent agenda and that if there's there's no holds, you can vote it all at once. But if people wanna talk about each one or hold each one, then they can. And there will be a presentation about all of them prior to that vote.
Good.
Everybody'll know what they're voting.
And and the reason it came up was um Wayne gave me a call actually last week and said, you know. And I think coming out of the uh study committee, you know, with the idea of trying to um speed up town meeting. Uh to think about whether we wanted to try this approach to the CPA recommendations this time around. We talked about it at the CPC meeting last night and people thought it was a a good idea and and the 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 there are four. Um CPA grants being recommended by the CPC. And as Ryan said, there'll be presented, you know, there'd be presentation on each of the four and then Wayne would go through. If anybody wants to hold it out to have more discussion on it, great, and if not, whatever stays in this consent group would get voted on. As a in a bundle.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good to me.
Yeah. Does that sound okay Nathan? Cause you were the one that did asked had a question about it before.
So that would mean mean that we would need to. Make our vote of recommendation of supporting. At the consent agenda, right?
No.
Like we did with the others.
You would be recommending or not the slate?
Right.
So basically you're recommending all four or none of them, right? You vote for it, you're voting for all four, if you vote against, you're right. The consent agenda. Your votes against all four.
So not to be more transparent, the five things are the annual appropriations and a couple of things here, this thirty thousand includes a. Administrative amount to conduct some study at the uh the bog house for affordable housing. So that's increased from most years, just so everyone's aware. E, which is normally, we're gonna put this much in the undesigned reserve is not legally necessary nor recommended. Cause it goes there anyways, all it does is cause Kelly to make a journal entry and then move it. So we vetted it, vetted it, her recommendation, we're just not voting that, it does not mean that money's not available or not appropriated. And then if two hydrological studies, one at the cranberry bog, which is part of the great compromise as I'm calling it. The uh Greeno Pond study is for um for that area, the residents and the impact of that water flow through the Greeno Pond. And to assess water levels for infrastructure decisions and other things, remember the conscom came and asked about boards and that type of thing, that would help with that. Rental assistance for seniors, you got a good presentation uh from Carol on this. And then the ADA accessible doors, just to update, I've been working with Steven and our facilities department and. Benfield's maintenance director Maul. We are going to try and fix this as it is, which would be much cheaper, using Steven's expertise and working together with with Maul. At worst, it's a sixty thousand dollar uh brand new system that needs to be installed, but but Steven is pretty confident that he might be able to. Do it for much less, maybe a third of that, if we can uh dig into the system. But that's gonna be really worked on and decided in the next month or two, so the CPC voted to put the higher amount in here for now.
And then the unspent funds, if there are any, roll back into the general.
Yes. No, back into the.
Community housing.
Housing.
The housing reserve.
The housing reserve.
Yeah, cause that's where it come from.
Yeah, yeah. You always have to put it back to where you ever came from.
I guess, you know, just to to touch that third rail. Who owns Benfield Farms? Does Town Carla own it or does Benfield?
Noah.
Does Noah own it? Why are we continuing to spend so much money on Benfield? I don't.
Town is not own the building, we we own the land, we lease the land to Noah. Why are we doing this? Yeah, well.
I it it it's.
Yeah, it's a good question.
I don't understand why we continue, particularly with the relationship we have. I don't, I don't know why we continue to do these onesy twosy things. It, yeah, I mean, it seems like it's a failed project, right? In long term, this is costing us a whole lot of money. What is their, what is the out, right? Like what what is their plan to make it so that they're not dependent upon us anymore? It seems like.
No incentive for them.
It seems like they just keep coming to us and we just keep throwing money away.
Exactly.
You know, I mean, it's obviously we need to worry about the tenants who are there, but there's something really, really broken here.
Yeah.
And this is just going to bleed us dry. I don't. There, I've touched it.
Well, I, we talked about this last night at the CPC meeting, cause this is the one article that we have held off. You know, deciding whether or not to recommend till last night and this question came up. I mean, I think there are a number of things to think about here, one is that. Um Noah is a nonprofit uh organization that builds affordable housing. And when they did this project for us. Um their expectation was that it would it would come in at a certain cost and they would not lose money on the on the um building. And you could, who knows who exactly is at fault around the whole issues with the septic system? But that has been a huge money sink for them. Um and they um, you know, again, I haven't been in the conversations for quite a while, but. They they don't run a much of a profit and on on Benfield, they don't make a profit, they're losing money on Benfield. And so a lot of the maintenance issues that have come up since the septic, I mean, just general maintenance of the building. They basically, you know, they don't, they don't um, they aren't taking care of the building.
So.
So the question is right.
So then what, do we just take ownership of it?
Well, you know, Ryan.
There has to be a long term plan.
I don't know whether legally, uh, and I I know we've had this conversation, whether what our options are, cause I know you've talked about it at the housing trust. Are there legal options for us to do anything on?
We have very little leverage.
Yet we still keep giving them money.
Well, what I I.
And and we don't have anything from.
The way I'm looking at it is, I I'm taking care of the town residents that are living in it.
But 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 only blindly, right? It's just blindly, right? We don't have anything from them that's telling them, that I've seen anyway. That's telling them what are their expenses, what are their plans, what is their maintenance plan? Like, we we don't have anything from them that.
I can tell you that has been requested.
Well, but we still give them money, right? You know, we gave them money, what, a hundred thousand last year? But but whatever it was to repair the septic, we gave them. Um, we just wrote off several hundred thousand dollars of a loan that we we did when we first started this. I think it was actually four hundred and fifty thousand, that's in addition to the land. Um, you know, we've we've given them so much. And I think that it's fair for us to say, if we're gonna keep bailing you out, we need to, we we need to know what the plan is. We need to know how how are you going to start making money, otherwise. We shouldn't be doing it this way, otherwise we should be putting aside money and just saying, look, every year we're gonna have to give fifty thousand dollars to Benfield in order for them to keep it going. I'm not actually suggesting that we do that, um, but you know, it's it's a little bit more transparent. It it just, it seems to me, and I've had people mention to me or ask me, who owns Benfield? Do we own it and that's why we're spending the money on it, or does another organization own it? And it is another organization that is just very poorly managing it, right? Yes, it maybe they messed up in the septic. Right? Or, you know, it's their septic, it's not ours. Um, and that costs them a lot of money, but they need that, they need a plan to bail it out.
I think, yeah, I agree with you, actually, everything you said. The the septic though, since it's on the land we own. And can, you could make an argument that we should pitch in on the septic.
No, I don't agree with you at all.
What?
Be why? Because it could contaminate the land?
Yeah, no kidding.
I don't.
I think that's a, I'm not saying you have to agree with it, I'm saying you could make an argument for that. Yeah, I think it's very hard to say, why do we gotta fix the building that you own, and by the way. Didn't it mean ADA, doesn't everything have to, didn't it mean ADA, has the rules changed? Why, why do they need new doors?
They don't need new doors.
So don't say we don't need doors, like if you wanna fit, upgrade doors, go upgrade doors. Okay, they won't, but so what?
And the, well, the problem is then in the short run, you have a a whole group of elderly people that live in the building. Yeah, that that uh.
The doors don't work.
The doors don't work.
Well, one of the doors works, but it works so well that it knocks them over because. The the key fob part does not work, so you have to put your key in and turn it and then the door opens. And if you can't scramble out of the way fast enough, because the button that used to work it. So they, alright, so let me ask you a different question. You sent around something Ryan today, maybe about the aircon and the heating, right? It it sounded like they're trying to fix, that was, that came from Noah, right? It was very cheery, ah, you know, by the way, we're giving you space heaters and all. Is that them finally bailing up to some issue or not?
Well, they have to heat the building.
Well, they have to do a lot of things, but so, you know, I don't know.
They did, they're they're not here, so we did discuss capital and maintenance with Benfield and and they claimed. That they could not afford to maintain the building at that level of of maintenance. So the the options is, it it felt like the options were, you can either go along with this as it is or you can take the building back. And I'm I'm definitely speaking.
We're re- really trying not to take the building back.
Cause that's their default, like here.
So I don't think this.
Here are the keys, right?
This is, this is wildly speculative, but I don't think there's another organization out there that's gonna take this building.
Obviously.
So we're trying to work with Noah in order to solve what it is a widely known problem. This particular issue is, to me, is is an accessibility issue, the the residents cannot. Sounds simple, but they're supposed to be able to.
Yeah, okay, I understand, I understand.
The same thing in their own apartment, doors they can't get into.
So this sixty would also do their own doors?
Yeah, the apartment doors and the entrance.
I I actually got the state to come out and the architectural board and. They tested the doors, the outside doors and they that they're not too heavy to pull, so they've got the right pressures, but they're not required. You know, they they've met the requirements of the architectural board, but. The art, the state couldn't make them do anything other than that, than what they did.
It's, it's a tough issue, it's a tough issue because this is what we're elected to do is, you know, I think about it in our master plan. We've got our five categories and this is part of caring community, you know? And the question is, you know, how much are we gonna allocate to that? And really, my my, aside from us, our board figuring that out, it's also think figuring out the equity of. You know, we have a council on aging that in theory has a great handle on the needs of the community. And are we giving disproportionately to this particular thing just because they are in a, you know, living in there? Whereas there may be other seniors or other people in need that that really need help too, and and I just don't have a handle on that. And this, if the village court comes to us and asks us for money. Are we gonna? Right, e- e- exactly. Giving money to a another organization. Another organization. It is.
Should we have them in and, I mean, we've talked to them before, but like you say, they they don't really have seem to have any motivation actually. Either they don't have the wherewithal or they don't have the motivation.
Well, I I think we as a board have to, even if we do a stopgap with this, we have to prioritize this as something. We're gonna have to figure out what to do, how to solve this problem.
Have to have a difficult conversation.
Right, but do you have that, do you put hold on this? Could revisit it next year and they get a lump of loan for whatever they got.
Oh.
Can I just add a quick variable so that the the funding source for this can only be used for affordable housing? So.
Yeah.
I would, I would much have much more agreement with the argument if there was another target for affordable housing in town. That this money would be taken in place of, so it can only be used for this, it can't be used for the other priorities. Cause normally this would be like an ARPA request, we'd be using this for ARPA, but ARPA is dedicated to the larger town boroughs. So if there's not another affordable housing target, which there should, there should be based off the master plan. This is the only thing, type of thing you can spend this on.
Right, and so in the in the equity argument, small the equity. Travis, it was articulated is, we went ahead, in Benfield we're at large. We went ahead and made affordable senior housing, people moved in with an understanding. So before you add new affordable housing, you gotta at least make sure the affordable housing that you've now created. Yeah, and and in terms of helping other people who are not living in that building, uh we are helping them as well. Cause if there are people that need um mortgage assistance, that comes under the rental assistance thing, so they are, and they're, well. There, uh there was another program actually for people owning their homes for that, cause uh. We haven't gotten AG um except on the tax. Thing, but, so that's why we are, so we gave heating assistance to people who have mortgages, you know, so we're we're trying is. It's not just the people at Benfield who are getting the help, I was put it, tried to put it that way. They're they're not the only ones, but they they do need this. If we care about our elderly residents about and letting.
I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's a fair statement, that just because questioning this, it means that one does not care about elderly citizens.
I'm not saying that it's not, that's not what I was saying.
Oh, she's saying the opposite, that uh that we are providing care to other um seniors in town as well.
The way I heard it is, you don't support this, you don't care about the elderly.
No.
No, that's not what I said, that's not at all. You own this book, we shoot this stuff.
So I think.
It's it's leaves issues.
What do you think we should do, Nathan? You brought it up, I mean, you have a opinion as to, do you, you feel strongly that we should, you know. Take a position on this that's, and not support it? I mean, I guess, I I guess I feel like. We should support this. But something has to change, right? I mean, I would very much oppose another one. Any anything else unless there's a different relationship and a better plan. And a way that either as a partnership or them alone, we figure out. How this building is going to be managed to the benefit of the residents who are there moving forward. Rather than waiting for things to break where it gets to this point, right? I think we we either need them to step up and say, this is how we're going to do it. Or we need them to step up and work with us about, you know, it. Maybe it is partnership, I'm not really suggesting that, but I mean, there there has to be, it's a partnership now. So we should either be part of what the plan is and so that, you know, we we. We know that everything is working well and people aren't struggling there with a bad situation. And having to raise it to our level and then get it through CPA in order to get something fixed, right? I think we need to.
It's broken.
It's it's broken, and this is, this is not going to fix the problem, this is only gonna fix the doors.
But last year you got involved Ryan on, I don't know, washing machines and trash collection. There was a bunch of little operational issues that you kinda stepped in on, right? And what was the outcome of that? Did Noah step up to it or were we band-aided in or what?
There's more problems there that they can fix.
Yeah.
But the stuff that we have highlighted, they have, they have worked to address.
They being Noah.
It's not to, not to everyone's liking in that building, but to to have mitigated the complaints.
Is there a manager of the?
There is.
And is that person owned full time there?
No.
No, got other things to do. He's got two hundred other buildings.
That's too small.
And they have a a rotate, a roaming staff of people that do maintenance people, custodians and whoever that come and do things? Yes. And they plow, they plow their own driveway and all that, just is that all they got? Yeah.
They they do plow.
They plow, yes. And are these people paying below market rent? Yeah, yes and yes.
Not all of them though, right?
Not all of them.
It's it's only.
And.
It's not fully. It's not fully affordable housing.
It's unfortunate that it's a lousy program, because it's not like village court, where you only pay thirty percent of whatever your income is. It's, and it's based on the income, qualification is based on the income you're making when you get in there. And then if your income goes down, the rent continues to go up.
Have any people left over time saying, I just, I can't afford it, I don't like it, I'm.
Yes.
Which they can do, and then they run it to other people who have to qualify.
Yeah, and we are giving, we are giving rental subsidies to a majority of the tenants.
We the town.
The town.
Through the rental assistance.
Through the rental assistance program, none, none to village court, because the way the, the price structure is, but.
I was village credit able to afford it then, and these guys can't, who manages village court?
It's completely.
It's, it was because the way it was financed to be built, that it got a different kind of program.
Subsidy, yeah.
Okay, so it's getting other money, these guys just.
Yes.
I mean, I mean, how much of this is NOAA incompetence versus the poorly structured economic?
Well, a lot of it, a lot of it is the poorly structured economic.
So you gotta.
Because they have, uh, they have affordable housing in the Boston area, that is working well, that, you know, they can.
So it's not like they're just.
Managing well, yeah, this was, and, this was an unusual project for them to take on out here.
So here's a question, and maybe a compromise, if Stephen B thinks he can do it for thirty K, or whatever, one of the appropriate thirty K.
Because he hasn't touched it yet, so we don't know that that's true.
Okay, but then they can't, they come back, they try, right?
Yeah, but.
For me, it's not the amount, it's more the, it's the.
It's the plan, you know?
And I agree with you, and if I could rec, wrestle it out of them. I would get it, in the meantime, we have residents that are really struggling with these, and there's, there's a lot of other things that need to get done, but we're not. Uh, we're not proposing, this, the housing trust is not proposing to address them, because it's not at the same level as. Being able to get into your own GD apartment.
Right, and that's, and that's the problem right there, right, that, that the problem is, is, we need a plan something, right? And I think that the statement is, we're not gonna give you anymore, unless we get a plan, you, you need partner with us, let's sit down.
Okay, so what are we gonna do here, guys?
Just the, just the, the staff eff- effort and the advocacy, I, I do agree with you. Yeah, staff effort and the advocacy, so we have requested state level ARPA, we have met with all of the elected officials in the area. We have met with NOAA maybe a dozen times, we, we have tried to, the office of disability came and reviewed. Whether or not they're in ADA compliance, like there has been a lot of pressure and no, no result, so it's not.
Can't believe.
I'm not sure it's solved, it's all.
Blood dripped on the stump, at any point, they're just, I mean, but anyway, alright, so.
A lot of efforts, but the point is, a lot of effort has gone into trying to make this.
And we can try to do it again, but for now, it seems like we should just swallow our. Vote it in, and as Nathan suggests, make it an objective, maybe try next year to put Carter on.
And maybe this goes on our, one of our goals.
Caring community.
I think it does, yeah, I would advocate for that.
So I have a question about the Greeno pond.
Greeno dam.
Greeno dam?
Greeno ponds.
Didn't we just spend a ton of money redoing the dam and everything?
What's the?
Point, green.
What's the benefit of doing this study?
Some people say they, there's too much or too little water going through.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's to, it's the water level question, trying to understand.
Where's the valve set?
Yeah, what, what is?
All designed at the time?
Brown, I'll give you this.
Yes, but there, there's a disagreement over how it's impacting the surrounding areas to include the, the Maple Street Bridge area. And where that's coming from, so the worry is setting the pond levels and how that impacts people upstream and downstream. And I'm not sure that it's solvable, which is what we've been using, which is measuring sticks, et cetera, so this study would give us answers.
Do you know that Paul Simon's on, one man's ceiling is another man's floor?
Okay, and then the Cranberry Bog one, I'm sorry, I wasn't here the night that he went through.
The same, uh, the same question there, except it also includes. A review of the dam, of the proposed dam, uh, repair design. Which was the issue that, um, created the conflict between the neighbors and the CONSCOM. So their hydrologic study, which is why it's a higher cost, includes, um. Looking at the dam number one, and then the Fifth Creek Street Dyke Dam, and also looking at the design. The proposed repair for dam number one, which was the big sticking point for the residents. So the CONSCOM has agreed not to move ahead with the current plan, and instead have this.
Third party.
Study done by, yeah.
And what did you say was included in the administrative expenses and D?
Oh, thirty.
So, ten thousand for, um, typical admin, use personnel assistance. There's a, um, association membership fee that's included in that, and then a, about twenty thousand for a study of the bog house. So.
Or is that not a, an article?
Cause you don't, you don't, the CPC can investigate its own future, so it's looking at. Further investments in the bog house in terms of affordable housing is appropriate or not.
So you don't, you, you can't do a, um, you can't do a, um, community housing grant. And for, uh, a, a, a study like this, you need to, the administer, you can use administrative funds. To figure out whether there is a project that is feasible to do on the bog house, to create housing. And then once you know that, if there is a project, then that project could be, um, considered for CPA funds as a regular grant request.
Is that gonna be called out as part of that presentation?
Presentation, at the request of the CPC chair, so the, the point of this is. The select board is looking for solutions at the bog house, so is the CONSCOM, because of the, the way it could go back and forth. And Julie and I do believe that this is the first gate, so completing the study will give you a path forward or not.
And it's specifically just affordable housing, or is it, are there project uses for the Cranberry Bog?
The only one we're investigating is affordable housing at this point.
Couldn't be an income generator to then use the, the income from that to pay for Benfield.
Yeah, we're so good at affordable housing.
Yeah, that, I agree.
Yeah, the, um, it may be a, a meeting that you weren't here, Nathan, did you, I don't know if you had a chance to see the. Presentation that Julie made about the bog house with the different, um, elements that were gonna be, um. What would you call it? The things that would be studied, the scope basically, looking at, at three different, um, aspects of. Uh, what you might be able to do with the bog house, anyway, it's, it's a very thorough presentation that, um. I'm sure you can get a copy from her, if you wanna take a closer look at it.
It will be on the website.
I must have not been here, was it the same night as the CPC?
I actually think she did that at a different time.
Earlier.
Yeah.
It's a prior meeting.
The CONSCOM is here, I don't remember, you wrote that video.
So do we wanna take these one at a time, or take them as a group, as if they were part of a consent agenda? In terms of our own recommendation?
Well.
Right now, I can.
Let's put it this way, if we don't, if we don't approve them as a congenit, it can.
Right, don't we change, right?
It, it consent, this whole thing should go on as a consent agenda, we should approve.
Right.
You know you have typos in all your parentetic thousands, right?
Yeah, and extra zero.
Sorry. I was gonna suggest that maybe Barney, you being our local grammar expert, maybe have a read through of this. For clerical and better.
Oh, yeah, I, I think he did.
Okay, you did.
That might have been my fault though, when I, maybe I cut and pasted, sent it, but.
Each credits. Okay. So.
Yeah.
Do we want this to go as a consent agenda, or do we want to take them one at a time? I think you should try the consented.
I do too.
I hear two consent agendas. To your small delegation. I think that we've had enough discussion on each one, and this is coming at the end of the meeting, and. I guess you're right, you're trying to speed things up, but maybe, you know, people have more questions on this. Individual things. Well, maybe, maybe not, but there will be a presentation upfront, that will address each of, each of the items, okay.
And then Rain will ask if anybody wants to hold one out of the consent agenda for further dispatch.
I, I guess.
We buy it as a.
So you can do, okay. I'm trying to, I mean, I think it's worthwhile, yeah, and this is just me speaking, but. It's worthwhile pushing the envelope a little bit to see what, where people's appetite. I know there are people who love to come to town meeting and ask lots of questions, right, I'm ten. There's another group of people that doesn't go to town meeting because those people ask. But maybe we gotta kinda net that out, if, if we're gonna get meaningful change to our composition. Okay. So then I would support that. Hey, Nathan? I, I think that's, I think that's fine, I don't know. Yeah, their, their, their recommendation from the select board would be they got reapprove or that, that, not that, we don't approve, it's not. Kinda say unanimous, right, because I don't, I don't. Well, then we should take it, if that's true, then I think. It deserves separation. If we're not. No, I'm fine, I'm fine with it just being one, because I don't know that I, there's only one that I really wholeheartedly support, and that's the senior. Right, if we were voting on that individually, you would vote not to. No, I wouldn't vote to support. It would. But that, that one I would vote to support. Okay, is there another way you would vote that to, you would that vote to support, you would not to support? Yes, but I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit caught here, right, I'm trying to be really super fair, where I was not here for the presentation. And so, uh, on the surface of it, I don't support them, but I, I wasn't here, so I think it's better if I just recuse myself. Um, because I don't, I don't want this to go up or down based upon what I know, which is not, I don't think sufficient. For me to make the right decision. So it's not that you're against a specific thing, you'd say you don't have information. My, my gut is against it, but I don't have the information to really know, and I wasn't here, and so that's not fair to the whole process. The Greeno one? It's the green. The, the two bog ones and the, um.
The pond and bond.
Yeah, the, the.
The Benfield.
And the Benfield, those three, I just have so many questions about, but I don't wanna slow the whole thing down, that's my vote isn't gonna. I understand, I understand, it's make or break it, but I don't feel like I know it well enough that I can say, yes, town, we should do this. But I probably will after the presentations, your town meeting, I, oh, yeah. I will can't guarantee that, I mean, at least.
You can always vote, uh, your conscience as a resident.
I will be voting.
At that point.
Right, so, you know, so that's why I'm saying, if you wanna do it as a consent, if we give you a resident before the election. You're still a board member till, when you.
Yeah, but if we also.
And we all. He votes as an individual.
Yeah.
We all own it as individuals, so. Not a citizen, I mean, as.
Yes, alright, well, so, uh, how about, shall we try this out, then a motion that we, um, offer these CPA, um. Recommendations as a consent agenda?
Yes.
And with, with, with the recommendation of passage by the select board?
Well, why don't you split it?
You wanna do the consent agenda first?
Yeah. That, how it is on Senate agenda.
I would move that we, um, handle Article nineteen, the CPA recommendations as a consent agenda.
Eighteen now, eighteen.
Eighteen, Article eighteen.
Sorry, Article eighteen.
Second. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that was, I think you said aye, I suppose, you're not unanimous then, I would just wanted to double check, I don't wanna misrepresent. It's hard to see sometimes on the videos.
Okay, and so then the, um, I would recommend, uh, passage, I would recommend that the select board. I move that the select board recommend passage of, uh, Article eighteen, is that what it is?
Of consent.
Of the consent agenda for Article, is it eighteen?
Yes.
Article eighteen.
So we move that they. And prove, you recommend they approve the consent, really cover that, now you recommend that.
Now, we just recommend passage of Article. And have to see, it's a consent agenda, just recommends passage.
Yeah.
Okay, I move that the select board recommend passage of Article eighteen.
Second, so. It's, that, that's approving all of those.
Yes.
Yeah, cause you already said it's consent.
We, we've already said.
We've already.
We've tried to bundle them.
First we say we bundle them. We approved the. Bundle them, now we have to recommend what we want. The bun.
The, the bundle. As a rule, okay, so, uh, are we finished with questions, any further discussion, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'd like to abstain.
Yeah, any obsessions?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, one obsession, so that was.
We don't have a therapist.
Well, we do in our vote, in our, in the, in the minutes, we will.
In fact.
In the minutes, yeah, of course it is.
I, um, consulted with our accountant, and, um, with your approval, I'm going to remove. Effective immediately after town meeting vote from all of these articles.
Yep.
So the reason being consistency, but also there are, um, there's at least one bucket where there wouldn't be enough to appropriate after. So the difference is, you would not be able to spend this from May thirteenth to July first, I do not think that any would, would be spent in that timeframe.
Okay.
The only real rush one is Russia's relative, um, the hydrological study, but we could have it out to bid, and ready to go for July.
Your author, I see you can learn the bit. Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
And with that, the angry, Ali shows up faster than that. In the CPA, uh, it's only in the CPA, let me see.
Yeah.
So then you have to approve the, I'll go through the election sub two, but approve the warrant as a whole, but I would recommend that you do so with allowing me to make. Edit.
Minor, yeah.
Natural.
Yes.
Well, first of all, there's a little bit of formatting, you know, it's gonna all be done and clear. I moved that the select board approve the, uh, warrant for the annual town meeting on May thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Um, allowing for, uh, minor, uh, changes, um, by the town administrator as necessary.
Second, okay, any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
And you opposed?
Good. Unanimous.
So that includes the election warrant, that vote?
No, I think we have to do a separate one, right?
No.
You should, I mean, just for.
Yeah, I mean, in the, in our packet, there's a separate one.
Show you the election warrant, it's just the time, it names the, where the election is, seven to eight o'clock, the fool, the fool gambit.
And, and I know you put the date in the verbiage, but shouldn't that also be in the both section?
Yeah, where it says have a section.
But, be, yeah, before the.
Yeah.
Or make it some.
The twenty first.
It's okay. Yeah. Okay, great.
Um, and then the three, the.
Yeah.
The three warrant, it's pretty language, the three election ballot questions are. Uh, exemption from Prop two and a half for the fire engine, exemption from Prop two and a half for the police department. And shall Carlyle vote to have its elected town clerk become appointed town clerk, so those are the three ballot questions.
Yeah, so should the proposition, two and a half will be capital ones, you know, the.
This comes directly from Bond, I don't, I don't wanna touch this one.
Okay.
These are from Bond counsel.
He, under to pay, oh, you should talk, when you talk to Bond counsel, give, give him the, him or her the bacon story, cause in order to pay, could just. That could be old English too, or.
So this just allows you to tax more if you need to, in order to accomplish these projects, does not mean that you will, just means that you can.
Formatting question, and why is question three an offset of, or is two as high?
It's not.
Willing to touch that. Good. Gang and year, who's the year?
Alright, so, um, do I have a?
Alright, so, um, do I have a, you wanted to make this motion?
Yes, I move to approve the annual town election warrant with ballot questions. The annual town election scheduled for May twenty first, twenty twenty four, in the Clark Room of Town Hall, sixty six Westford Street. Carlisle Mass, zero one seven four one.
Second.
Uh, any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right. One thing I wanna mention on that is that the turnout, the, moving from a elected town clerk to an appointed town clerk. I had taken kind of the lead on that the last time with the crazentation or whatever. Um, I was thinking that it probably makes sense to write an article for the mosquito. You know, but I wanted to have it comes from the vice chair of the select board or something, is that okay? Like, hey, then I'll just use, you know.
Can I just give the old, can it come from an old word?
It can, but we probably need to have a meeting so that you can review it, cause we can't all, unless. Could I, could I write it and then receive comments, and then just take the comments that I decide, and then, no, we can't do that.
Or you can, can't you do it?
April twenty third meeting.
So I can draft it for April twenty third and then circulate it?
Yeah.
You guys, you can all look at it?
You can circulate it in the packet.
It's okay. I better get on and, I'm away next week, I'll quit. Oh, twenty third, it's, it'll be good, forgot it.
Hey, rip through the rest of this and.
Quick, yeah, one seventeen is the town TA report, right, but is this from before? This looks like it's a slower.
Just, I spent much more time on the budget and the warrant, so the, the only thing in the TA report is. Previously reported items that are coming up in the draft.
Agenda for.
Agenda, which includes. Um, following, so, uh, reserve fifteen minutes in case we have to do town meeting budget stuff. You will have one more meeting before a town meeting, so that's just administrative. Julie's prepared, and I are prepared to discuss the fire station RFQ, invited, uh, the fire chief, and will invite anyone else who think.
Um.
Relevant. Jim and I have finalized the two-year road maintenance plan, you know, present that to you as well, I think that's pretty good, we'll have cool pictures. And then fourteen Estee Road, just so you know, this is, um.
They want, hooking to Bill Ricker.
Hooking to Bill Ricker, it's been approved by council, and they did, uh, address Travis's question, which was, does this. Create further implications, and it does not, so each one has to be dealt with individually, to include a forty B.
Great, okay.
I wanna go back for a second on the, uh, fire station design proposal, um. Is the chief gonna be part of that conversation? Okay. Because I think some questions that would come up right about plans for the fire station.
Mm-hmm.
So that'd be good.
Just continue.
And that is my report.
Okay, thank you.
And, um, just.
Pants for the first time in a month.
Too bad.
Hit again, yeah.
Feeling better? Feeling better? Mostly, yeah.
Um.
You won't have any more flare ups.
And just on the calendar for our future meetings. Um, I did a reminder to all of us, right, that we're not meeting on the fourteenth of May after town meeting. We are gonna meet the previous Tuesday, May seventh. Did you get that, Nathan?
That's word.
Okay.
In the seventh, swatch, in key, in key.
Oh, my goodness, what a great timing, you know, how did that happen?
We have to do the minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, March twenty.
Pretty close, March twenty sixth.
Get I move to approve the March twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, select board meeting minutes as presented, or amended.
Second.
Were there any amendments that people want?
Yeah, I put a comment in, I just wanna talk about it quickly, is, is when we have letters that come in or emails. Um, the John Lavery was the specific one, there was a comment above it about, you know, these are asterisks or whatever, and it was unclear to me. What was in there, so I had asked that, that they put the two from, like, so that it looks like an email. So, I mean, so you, you are publishing what the person is sent. So that was a change.
Oh, it's, oh, that it's, and that's reflect.
And, and that's now reflected in there, but I.
Okay, so it is a, yeah, that's, okay.
Yeah, because I just think that's, yeah.
Yeah.
Gretchen.
So I have, I have a couple of questions on, in the packet on page one thirty three, but it's.
Okay.
Page it was.
It's in the.
Select rollup packet.
Yeah, but we're page on the draft on the minutes, on the minute.
I, page five of twelve.
Page five, thank you.
How do you do it?
Well, you said page one thirty three, and I, yeah, that's how I.
Should say that.
Okay, so it, it's, I don't know if you find it.
Right, they, there's page numbers.
So it's page five of.
Okay.
So, um, it says in. He talks about the Capitol, I think it's down, okay, it's about where. The A of draft is, the board, I think I'm discussing, in fact, the warrant article is the three prime one with percent of everything. The acts bill. And he said, the plane clarified that all owner, those except police station rental included, but should be the police station rental and fire truck, right? Fire trucks excluded, that is it not?
So, yes, but the fire truck is assumed, based off the FinCom's analysis and our discussions, to be rolled into the operating budget. Based off the held debt capacity, what I was saying is the police station would.
Is up at top.
Not included in that.
But the fires truck is paid for.
Yes, if we hold the debt.
Clarification.
Yeah.
And then at the top of the next page. Uh, read move the meeting to next agenda, unspent bond proceeds, citing the desire, FinCom's comments. I am sorry. No, I'm sorry, the next one, unspent bu- bonds proceeds appropriation. It's not clear from this, that the unspent stuff has to be spent on kinda. It's not clear where, where it goes, I know we talked about it, and you have to spend it on something similar, right? We, we kinda went through that, right, in other words, it doesn't dump out to free cash, right?
So you authorize the payment of indebtedness, specifically the long-term debt line in the town's operating budget?
Here am I looking. So, okay.
Yep.
So authorize the payment of indebtedness. So another is, in, is that language that says the unspent money goes back into the?
So we're paying for long-term debt in that line item?
Yeah.
So that would create a overage. In that line item, which would then turn to free cash.
Authorize the payment of indebted.
So we.
Paying payment.
So there's a line item in the budget called long-term debt payment?
Okay.
We, that's what we pay for our debt.
Okay, so in other words, what this little paragraph's saying is, you take the excess and you pay down other debt.
That's kinda what that means, yes.
Barney, this is highlighted, cause I guess Gretchen didn't know what who it was that seconded it, and.
I, I honestly don't remember.
That's what I told her, I said, I, he said unless somebody else says, hey, why'd you put her as the seconder? Cause I seconded it, that we should just leave it as it was, cause I didn't think anybody would remember it.
And one other tiny little thing, you know, under the unspent bonds, uh, headline.
Yes.
Third sentence down, third line down, first word says statue instead.
Of statute.
So just put a T in there.
Statue.
Yes.
I missed that, I.
Got it, Gretchen.
Aye.
Alright.
Alright, so, yes, as amended, so, um, and we have a second, right? Uh, any further amendments or comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Made a great job, Gretchen.
Yeah, cause this was, these were tough minutes, so.
They're tough, yeah, okay, very good.
Okay, and done, so, um, any liaison reports?
I kinda gave mine.
You gave yours, anybody else? Any community input, there's nobody in the room, anybody?
Sorry, I had to unmute my computer, I do, let us, somebody else, I heard somebody else's voice saying.
John.
No, can you guys hear me?
Yep, yes. You are freezing.
Sorry. Um, yeah, I'm tired just listening, so, I don't know how you guys feel. Uh, I wanted to focus on that last piece from Ryan about the fire station RFQ. I have written a couple of notes to people, and, um, looking at the minutes from. That you guys just approved from the last meeting, and a lot of my comments and thoughts are in there. Actually, I think it's too soon for an RFQ, because we don't have a goal for the fire department. A mission statement for the fire department, and kinda what we want our fire department to be. Uh, that sounds kinda silly, because you want the fire department to put out fires, but there's a lot of room to maneuver. Within that description, and I think if we, if we ask Ryan and Julie to go get, um. Some architects to design and, uh, potentially build a fire station, they're gonna bring you back architects and spades. They're gonna architect tech out of this thing, but you are not asking them the right question, we're not tasking them appropriately. Uh, because we don't have a long-term plan for what we want the fire department to be. And if it heads in the wrong direct, wrong direction, it's gonna cost us a boatload of money. And we probably won't ever get to where we wanna be, but we'll still spend all the money. And we'll have all the equipment, and we'll have all the infrastructure, and it won't be that useful. So I'd really like you guys to think about, um. Uh, coming up with a long-range plan for the fire department, before you task Ryan and Julie to go. Uh, hone an RFQ, uh, for architectural support. I, I think there's a lot of questions, a lot of ground to cover before you do that.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Excellent. Any, I don't see anybody else, uh, online, well, wait, I have, can you get me the screen so I can see if there's anybody else online who wants to make any?
Christina's still online.
Alright, anybody else wanna, uh, for community input? Seeing none, I would, um, entertain a motion to a chair. Ask, I need seconds.
I can.
Good, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, thank you.